Where is everybody? The important people are here.
Looks like we've got almost everybody. All right, Hugh gets connected up here. We can start and Phil, I'm assuming will join us when. Doesn't look like it. Sean, are you on? We can't see you. Okay.
Is Annie going to make it?
Yeah, Annie's here. We've got everybody. Hugh's still connecting and we're missing Phil, so.
So we don't have any video of everybody?
Oh, are you not seeing everybody, Mike?
No.
Oh, I'm seeing everybody.
The only one I saw was Holly. And now even she's gone.
I'm still here.
Yeah, I've got everybody on my screen, so I don't know. You might have hit the wrong button or something.
I just saw Hugh there for a second.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
It looks like it's.
Nice look with the clean shaven. Thank you.
All right.
It's just for you, Dan.
Settings here. And then I guess we'll get going without Councilmember Foyer. Hopefully he'll be joining soon. And so tonight's discussion is March 16th. Our workshop discussion tonight is term limits. So I'm actually going to leave leading the discussion to Councilmember Kurt, since this is something that she wanted to continue to bring forward. And there is, there are a couple of scenarios that were provided to you in your packet. Hopefully you've had a chance to read through those.
All right, can everybody hear me okay? I'm in a different room because we're quarantining for COVID. So hopefully everybody can hear me. So this is our third workshop on term limits. And so you can see on the screen that there's a couple of different scenarios. The first one involves whether to look at doing term limits by ordinance. The second scenario talks about, I guess, sort of the pros and cons of putting things on the ballot. I've been talking with Katie. It seems to make the most sense, at least from my perspective, to figure out, one, if we want to go forward with term limits, and if that includes the mayor or the city council members. And then, two, figure out how we want to do it. And then, three, figure out, I guess, the language piece of it, either for a ballot option or for an ordinance. So that's kind of the thought that I had in mind was having a discussion, one, around, do we want to have term limits established for the city of Ludwig Lake? And if so, do we want it to apply to just city council, just to the mayor, or to both? So I'm wondering if we can start the discussion there.
Councilmember Langford.
Thank you. Yes, we can discuss it. I'm not particularly for it, not particularly against it. It should include the mayor and it should also include the electorate. Thanks.
Short and sweet. Thanks, guys. Councilmember Dunn.
You know, I want to recognize and thank you, Annie, for objective and drive. This important topic that I'm going to be direct takes a little bit of courage. And for you to step forward, I'd say, as a freshman in gesture and to take this one on, reflects, I think, a lot of capability. I support the initiative specifically. I actually really value the notion of allowing and enabling changes in leadership and changes of perspective. I, I think that creating a systemic way to ensure that there is a fresh perspective on the problems that we observe or that we try and engage and deal with really assures that we will have a continued renewal of the sense of why and what and how can we do it better? With respect to, you know, whether or not we choose to enact and empower as a council in this action. Yeah, I think actually it's within the power of this group to make that determination. I think that truly this group can define, as we have been elected to do, what we think is the best action to be taken. I find that the costs and the circumstances surrounding ballot initiative in this moment are not necessary, given the nature of the action at hand. So I thought carefully about what the total like count. What is the number of limits or the terms you think are useful and valuable? I think I'm kind of on the fence in that between two and three. I, I think that definitely less than three. And be very interested in the perspective of the count, you know, that account piece. How, how you guys feel about that? Thanks.
Thanks. As you're being awfully quiet tonight.
Councilmember Woodruff. Thank you. It's interesting because I've always thought that the voters had term limits within their powers just by voting people out. And clearly that doesn't happen in a lot of cases. Where I've moved from, I always keep bringing this up. We had two council members that were on there for 40 years. Nobody ever ran against them. The way they got off council in their 80s was sadly they passed away. They were good council people. One of them was my councilperson. But so I, I feel like we shouldn't need term limits. But then I feel like we do need term limits. So I, I've really wrestled with this since I saw that Councilmember Kurtz brought this up. And thank you for bringing this up. Like Councilmember Dunn, I'm, I'm not sure about the two, two terms. I'm leaning more towards three, just simply because having had to hit the ground running after being appointed to council, I feel like it's going to take me a couple of years just to really fully understand this job. And I don't know that I'd want to give it up after just two terms. But I think three is definitely no more than that. But I'd be okay with two if that's what everybody decides. As far as whether we should decide or let the electorate decide. I think we could let, let it be on the ballot in the fall if we wanted to. If it's only going to cost another $500. But I'm okay if everybody wants to just go on ahead and decide it for us. I, I, I feel like if we let the voters decide, these are future council members who would be voting and they would be the one deciding, deciding whether to have term limits. And also I agree, I think it should apply to both the mayor and the city council positions. So, thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Any other comments? Thought we, there would be a lot more on the Council Receivers.
Sure. I too wrestled with this quite a bit. And like what Councilmember Woodruff mentioned, I've always viewed this as it's really up to the people to impose their own term limits. But just out of the, I have the idea that, that we force the issue to bring fresh blood in and, and fresh ideas. And I think that, that pushes progress on the city. After, after long thought, I, I do agree with some sort of term limits. I don't think that two terms is long enough. I do think it should be three. And my rationale is, it's also similar there that I can say that it took me a couple of years just to figure out what the heck I was doing. And now here I am, seven and a half years in, I feel a lot more capable and feel I understand the system a lot more. And I hate for somebody to be cut off right as they're starting to really come to their own and feel really great about this. And I'm not saying it should take seven and a half years. But I, I do think that, that three terms is not a, is not 40 years. I appreciate that example that, wow. That's unfathomable, unfathomable to me. But I, I don't think it should be more than three. I think three is probably a nice sweet spot. I do not think this needs to go to the vote of the people. I don't think we need to pay for an election. I think we should be able to decide this as a body. And, and I for one would say, and sorry, just to address, there should be mayor and council. We should not separate these, I don't think. And, and I think three terms is, is, I'm going to use the word plenty, but not too much. I think two might be a little bit too limiting. So long story short, I think three terms is a nice place to settle on. That's what I would support.
Thank you, Councilmember Receivers. Mayor Proten.
Yeah, first, first of all, the only time I, in my screen, the only time I see anybody is when they start to speak. And when I went to the bar for shared screen to try to get it going, it says host disabled participating screen sharing. So it must be something on Todd's end if we can work on getting that corrected. In the, in the meantime, in the meantime, my feeling on this is that it has to be for all elected officials. What we first of all need to do is decide, do we want term limits? And at that point, if we vote yes or no, then we can get into two years, three years, give it to the people or not. I am not in favor that council makes this decision. I think this is a decision that has to go to the citizens. And the reason being is as a council makes this decision, another council can change it. And I just don't feel there's, there's enough teeth that this council or any council makes a decision of this impact for the city. I really do believe that has to go to the citizen and that's the only route that I would vote. Thank you.
Real quick, Mayor Proten. Todd, can you maybe walk Mayor Proten through changing the view through chat or no?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Proten, if you can look for some chat come up on your screen. Hopefully Todd will work, walk you through changing your view.
Right. Thank you.
All right. I'm just checking to see if there's Councilmember Foyer at least there. He's coming on. Hi, Councilmember Foyer, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Sorry.
Great. That's right. Just, we're in the middle of discussing our term limits. And it looks like I think everybody has had a chance to kind of weigh in on the issue. So you are up next if you'd like to take the opportunity.
Well, great. What did everybody else say?
It was all you.
Talk about put a guy on the spot.
Really, the discussion, Councilmember Foyer's just basically been around. You know, each council member's, you know, thoughts about, you know, term limits or no, two or three terms, you know, ballot versus council. It's kind of how, how you personally feel about it. And we'll kind of try to take the appropriate next step.
So has everybody else already spoken to it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll just tell you what I think then. Given the, the opportunities that we've had for citizen comment, I've had one person reach out to me personally regarding this topic. Based on that, based on some different thoughts that I have regarding local government and why we're all here, I don't think we need term limits at all. And I say leave it up to the voters at the voting booth every four years. So if you want me to go into further as to my reasons why, but that's pretty much it. I heard from one citizen over the course of the last three advertisements regarding this topic.
Got it. All right, so it kind of sounds like we're kind of, Kim, we're not taking votes or anything at this point since we're in workshop, but it's kind of split down the middle. So I guess our next step, unless anybody has any other compelling arguments. And I know, Annie, obviously, since you brought this forward, obviously it's something you want to consider. Is there anything you want to add since everybody's spoken?
I think my thoughts on it, because I, I didn't talk about them today, but I think I have in the past, is that I, I, I do support the idea of term limits. And the reason why is because I think that it encourages people to apply and to get involved in our local government. I think if you look at incumbents, it's very difficult to win an election against an incumbent. And that could be a mark of how well they're doing in city council. But I think having someone with great experience can discourage people from, from putting their name out there and, and going for it. Now, I think the argument can be made if you're discouraged from that. I mean, should you be doing it? I can understand that as well, too. But I like the idea of having, I think, the three terms. I think that's, that's a, that's a nice period of time to be able to contribute to your community. If you want to, you know, contribute further, you can run for mayor or go on one of the other commissions that we have to continue to contribute. So, I mean, I'm not. I think the other piece of it for me is for me, I think I would prefer to do it by ordinance because I think that this is one of the decisions that we, we can make. And I think that it's a reasonable decision to make. When I'm looking at the scenarios, it looks like it would cost us about $5,000 to do that. And I think we could spend the money in a different way. So from that perspective, I like the idea of three terms for both mayor and city council and putting this up for ordinance.
Okay, just a quick clarification and I'll weigh in as well as well. So if we do a special election, the estimated cost is around $4,500. If we add it to the general election, it would be around 500. Now, I was talking with Katie a little bit earlier today. And it sounds like if, if we go down the road to put it on the ballot, both for mayor and city council, it sounds like that would be two different items on the ballot because you can't put two different issues into one, into one vote. And you want to, you want to elaborate on that, Katie?
Sure. So if you choose to move forward with putting it on the ballot as mayor said, the research that Sean has done says that we'll need two ballot measures because the citizens have to have the option to vote for the council term limits and for the mayor's term limits separately. But we need to confirm that. So if you want to go the route of a ballot, then we will do that research. The other thing I do want to mention, and just for clarity, is if you have a special election, it's that 4,500, 5,000. And if you don't do a special election and you put it on the general election, RJ got an estimate from the county. And there's a lot of other things on the ballot. So our cost, our city cost would be $500 estimate. So just, I wanted to draw that clarification.
Yeah, and like all of you, you know, been kind of torn on this. And, you know, I 100% agree, you know, if we are a term limit, it needs to apply to all of us. Hands down. You know, and again, you know, I vote on this other count unless it goes on the ballot, right? Just, just being here, here for a while, that's, you know, I also agree with me on the three terms being the max. And I don't know if, if there is maybe, obviously we would need to work on wording, whether it was an ordinance or on the ballot. But I know in the, in the suggested languages on the, on our list of showing up on the screen, you know, it's talking about, you know, how do we account for people like, you know, like three of us who are on the board who were appointed to begin with? So that, those are partial terms and how do those count toward your total terms? So I don't know if there's something, you know, if we go three terms, if that would then include any appointed time or partial terms? That's something that would have to be discussed.
So one other thing that I shared with Annie after my conversation with Sean was that legally, we don't think we can do anything retroactively. So if this does go on the ballot or it's passed by ordinance, it would be from that date forward. And so I just, for purposes of clarity, we, we're not able to go back. You're not able to go back and retroactively imply term limits to people currently on the city council.
And, and to Mayor Proten's point about. I totally lost where I was going. Hey, next. If it comes to me, it's been a while.
I can tell you, I just know.
Okay, go ahead.
So not to move this along too quickly, but I took notes and it sounds like six of you would support moving forward with term limits. Whether it's by vote or ordinance, I have three voting and three ordinances. Though some of you that said you prefer the vote, you would support an ordinance. And then finally, I'm hearing three terms. So that's kind of my takeaway so far. I think moving forward, is there the consensus? The question is going to be how? And is it going to be by ordinance or right on the ballot?
Yeah. So I remember what I was going, going to say real quick, Mayor Proten, with regards to putting an ordinance in the, in the point that Mayor Proten brought up about, well, you know, the next council could just go back and change that. But, and I was, I, I fully understand that point of view. But then when you think about it, anybody who is elected going forward, once this ordinance is in place, would be coming into the position knowing that they were term limits. So that might redo, I would think that would probably reduce the chance of them wanting to change it. So it doesn't stop anything. But at least people going forward knows that's what their, the future kind of holds. Mayor Proten, you have other comments?
Yes, I'm not comfortable moving forward, looking at this as a consensus. Let's get real about this. Let's put it to where we vote, that the council votes, that it was going to be a motion, a second, and discussion, do we want to have term limits? Because if we're going to move forward on the idea of consensus, we could have three one way, three another way, and one in the middle. And that doesn't give us any direction. Thank you.
So no, we obviously don't have any action items on workshop, but we can get take direction by vote, correct?
Yeah, I think just for clarity, what we're looking for, Annie, help me out here. But we really, if the council wanted to move forward with an ordinance, then we would bring back an ordinance. If the council wanted to move forward with a ballot measure, we would bring back a ballot measure. Neither of those have been put together at this time. And, and there's kind of a, if you do want to be put on the ballot, there is a calendar that we're going to have to respond to in terms of the current election cycle.
Councilmember Receivers first.
I heard relatively clear direction from at least four council members bringing back an ordinance that then we could discuss and vote on in meetings for three term limit, I'm sorry, three term limits. Yeah, anyway, three term limits. So I think we should bring that back to future council meeting. If we're looking for direction, do, do we need, do we need a vote on that? To say bring it back as a written ordinance? Then we can just discuss the, the wording and the ordinance in our, in our council discussion on it? Whenever we have that?
Yeah, hey, Councilmember Receivers, can I put your question on hold for just a sec? I've got Mayor Proten and then Councilmember Langford who wants to make additional comments. Then I'll come back to you.
Please, I was, is it, am I on the floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Seeing as this is a discussion, I would like to hear more discussion on how this council thinks that they're going to be able through an ordinance to keep this, have enough teeth to continue on. And what provisions, if any, can you put in an ordinance that future council, the next council that comes along and says, you know what? We got four individuals that don't like term limits. So we're going to change this. And now all the time and effort we put into this is for, is for not. So I'd like to hear discussion from the council members who are either in favor of going on or not going on, that if it is going to be an ordinance, how are you going to protect it? Thank you.
Moving on, Councilmember Langford and Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you. First of all, what we're doing without going to the public is denying them the ability to have a say on how long their legislators can stay in office if they're consecutively voted in. So I am for bringing this to the electorate. We've all strived throughout our 10 years to find ways to involve the public in their government. And now, when we have the opportunity to invite them in and allow them to have a say on something as crucial as this, we seem to have a falling away where people are a little bit more interested in protecting their own little private plot of land instead of going to the public, which the same people have requested numerous times under various scenarios. So it seems to me that this is the perfect opportunity to go to the people because whether or not, we're not changing a constitutional law, okay, or a legislative law. But what we're asking them to do is participate in their government. And I think it would be a great move for us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn.
Oh, just in regard to the notion that ordinance, ordinances of the city somehow persist, a subsequent city council could dismantle the library or actually revert to contract police services from the county. That's really the decision of the group. Now, that's an averse and hopefully untoward vision of the future. But I mean, there is nothing, I'd say, in action that precludes a future city's council from reconsidering and considering ordinances that any of us are making today. So I would just reflect on that insofar as any action taken by ordinance.
I'm in a meeting, I was re-reading.
All right, Councilmember Receivers, sorry, I kind of got, got away from where you were going. So having heard some additional feedback, is there anybody else who wants to speak another time? So Councilmember Foyer and Councilmember Woodruff, we've only heard from each of you once. I hope you want to weigh in again before I hit up anybody else. Councilmember Woodruff.
I agree with Councilmember Odin Langford. I think the voters should have the chance to weigh in on this. Again, they're going to be, they're going to be the ones running for future council in their positions. I think they should be the ones to decide whether we should limit our terms or not. Again, ideally, the voters would just do that on their own anyway. You know, again, 40 years is way too long, in my humble opinion, for anybody to serve on any elected position, whether it's local or federal or state. But I do believe, and again, as Councilmember Langford said, it's a way to get the electorate involved. They're the ones who are going to be running in the future to replace any of us. And let them decide. Put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foyer, anything to add?
Sure. Sure. I, I just go, I just want to maybe, I, I just don't think we need term limits at all. Based on what I've seen recently with these, how many people have applied for these positions? You know, we had 11 a couple of years ago. We had 15 just recently. Obviously, there's more interest in what the council does with the citizens of the city. And everybody has the opportunity to put their name on the ballot. And everybody in the city has an opportunity to vote once every four years. So, you know, I'm a, I'm a, personally, I'm a, I would be strongly in favor of term limits at the state and federal level. But at the local level, given the size of our city, I just don't feel any. But I don't feel, I don't see a strong reason to move forward with some term limits. Nobody here is a career politician. Nobody here has a hidden agenda. Nobody, and we're all here for the good of the, of the community, the good of the city. And I think that the citizens have a chance every four years to make a difference on the seven people sitting here. Now, with that said, the seven people, the city council, I know that we're talking about term limits for the mayor as well. That, that to me is a little bit of a different discussion. Mayor, nothing intended towards you personally. But the mayor is, holds one position, very strong position within the city. There's seven council members, each have their own opinion, bring it to the table. The majority moves forward. So could there be, be more validity to term limits on the mayor? Sure, I could go along with that. But there's seven council members, just don't know that we need term limits for the council members. Thank you. Thank you.
So, so just trying to not officially tally votes here, but it sounds like, and Councilmember Foyer, can correct me if, if I'm reciting this wrong. Obviously, you know, your opinion is we don't need them at all, but if it came to make the council voting on it or putting it on, on a ballot, which would you prefer? Understanding your preference with none.
So if I had to choose between those two, I'd say put it on the ballot.
Okay. So kind of based on the second round of discussion, it sounds to me, and Councilmember Seavers, let me, let us know if this then answers your previous question, it sounds to me like the majority is kind of going toward putting it on the ballot. So if I'm stating that incorrectly, it looks like Katie's kind of taking notes as well to sound like we were agreeing on what we're hearing. Councilmember Seavers.
Madam Mayor, that's the way I heard it also. So it sounds like we, majority wants to put it on the ballot, so would we bring it back to a council meeting to discuss the, the verbiage and the, and would we actually vote on term limits and things like that in a council meeting before we put it on the ballot?
Yeah, so, so my, my suggestion would be is to bring back some proposed language at a future meeting as soon as we can because of the deadlines for anything on the general election. Bring back a proposal ballot language for both mayor and city council positions with what I'm sounding like three term limit. If we can make that interchangeable with two, so we can, you know, have a discussion and then go put, have that on the ballot to, excuse me, on the agenda to, to discuss and then vote on what the language would be going forward or ask for edits, and then we can go from there.
And one thing I do want to mention, Sean knows a lot more about this than I do, but the, your language has to be approved, and I'm not sure which body of government approved your ballot language. So they're very specific on what you can do. So now that we know that you do want to put it on the ballot, we will invest the time to get the language, I think, that you guys can weigh in on, but that we could get approved. And the other thing I do want to mention is all of the details associated with the term limits, you know, the gaps in service, who it applies to and all of that, we will need to work that out also, and you will have a chance to weigh in on that, but it won't necessarily be in the ballot language. It would be in the paperwork that supports the ballot.
Yeah, because you only are allowed so much rest.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll move in that direction.
And Councilmember Foyer has another comment, sorry, Katie.
No, not a comment, just a question. Is there a reason, is there a reason why we can't just make a motion at the seven o'clock meeting and, and have a vote on this, whether it's ordinance or, or vote?
Well, it sounds to me, we've got, we have direction for the staff to get the language put together so that at the next meeting, we can, you guys can vote on approving that language or not. This is how I'm seeing it.
They could make a motion to formally give us direction to put it on the ballot if they were.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, so if during the seven o'clock hour, if somebody wants to make the motion to bring it, to bring it back again, you know, for the final vote, we can. But right now, it sounds like staff has their direction. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we first have to make a decision in a, in a regular meeting? Do we want term limits or not? And that will determine where we go from there?
I don't know if Sean's on. So right now, I don't think Sean's on the phone. Mayor, can I? Yes, go ahead, Matt. So we have, based on what I'm hearing, we have direction to bring back a ballot measure regarding term limits for the council to formally approve at a future council meeting. I don't think we need more direction than that, but Mayor Pro Tem, did I miss your question? We don't, I think we have what we need to bring it back.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
I'm not having a challenge of bringing this back, but before, before we, before we get this cart too far in front of the horse, I think it's, at some point, the council has to vote on, do we want, are we going to have term limits? Is that what we want? Once that is done, then the rest of this information, we can address more seriously.
Well, based on the conversation I heard, the council isn't going to make the decision whether we want term limits, but that they want, you guys want to put it on the ballot for people to decide.
I don't have any formal document for you to review tonight related to a ballot measure. I'd like to bring that back so that you can have time to look at what's being proposed.
So it's, the vote will be either the, it's on, goes on the ballot with X language, goes on the ballot with modified language, or doesn't go on the ballot at all. Go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think it's important that we get on the record a motion at the seven o'clock hour that says, yes, we want term limits or no, we don't, and then another motion that says how we're going to do it. And that is an up or down on a ballot initiative or an ordinance. Can we get that, can we get, can we get that on record at the seven o'clock meeting?
We can do that, let me just take a look as to where we might put that. Yeah, so if somebody would like to move to amend the agenda during workshop, is that the right place? I think so.
I think that's the best place for it. On the workshop discussion?
Yeah.
Make a motion at that time.
Yeah. Yeah, so if we, if somebody can, when we get to that point, if somebody can move to amend the agenda to add an additional workshop discussion on this, we'll hopefully get through it pretty quickly, and we'll take those motions and votes and move on to the consensus adjutant after that. Does that work for everyone? Okay, sounds good.
So I do have one request.
Yep.
Ann is not feeling well, so RJ will be taking minutes. So when whoever's making the motion, make sure that we have the language correct.
And state your name when you're moving, when you're making the motion, and whoever seconds, if you could state your name too. I can see it pretty well, but if RJ's trying to take notes, he may not actually see who spoke. Thanks. Okay. Anybody have anything before we jump off for a, oh, almost 25 minute break before our seven o'clock? Nope? Okay, well, we'll see you guys back here a little bit before seven. Thanks, guys. Everybody back on here. Okay, I think we've got, well, we had all seven still disappear.
We have to get a longer.
We're going to make him go first again. All right, well, all right, everybody, welcome to our March 16th, 2021 city council meeting, consistent with Governor Ingele's Order 20-28.15, dated January 19th, 2021. All public meetings continue to be held remotely. We are following the directions of that order, and this meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we can have a productive meeting. On this agenda are routine and necessary actions for our council to consider. We will provide two opportunities for public comments to provide, for the public to provide comments. City staff physically attending this meeting in the chambers with me this evening are City Administrator Katie Allen and IT Technician Todd Henderson. Todd will be the manager for this evening Zoom meeting, and any chat that pops up during the meeting will be directed to him. He will get my attention if so needed. I'd like to take the roll call of the city council. At this time, I will call your name. Please let me know if you are participating. I've seen that first time, Mike.
President, thank you.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes, here, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Seavers?
Howdy.
Councilmember Dunn?
Happy Tuesday.
Councilmember Kurt?
Present.
Councilmember Oden Langford?
Present.
And Councilmember Woodruff?
Present.
Okay, and I've got you all on video as well. City staff also attending remotely are Finance Director RJ Stevenson, Police Chief Damon Stone, Operations and Maintenance Director Jen Camp, Funding Engineering Building Services Director Lisa Key, City Engineer Ben Schmidt, interim Municipal Library Director J M B Humble, HR Manager Heidi Workman, and City Attorney Sean Vow. As I mentioned earlier, there are two opportunities for public comment when those times come, come, when those times come, I will acknowledge public participation. There is a three-minute limit during a regular citizen comment period. For the record, please let me know your name and if you are a City of Liberty Lake resident or not. To participate on Zoom, the public can also indicate by choosing the chat feature. As I mentioned earlier, that chat will go to Todd, who will get my attention. Finally, anyone who's not speaking will be muted until it is time for you to speak. The first item on the agenda is the invocation, and I failed to ask someone again, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Dunn if he wouldn't mind doing the invocation tonight.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together in any, really the ways that we know that we can during this pandemic. Please inspire us, inspire in us the ability to listen and to understand. In your son's name, amen.
Amen.
All ready for the Pledge of Allegiance? Join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call the meeting to order and do our official roll call. I'll run through this real fast. Mayor Pro Tem Kennedy?
Present.
Councilmember Foyer?
Present.
Councilmember Seavers?
Here.
Happy Tuesday.
Councilmember Kurt?
Present.
Councilmember Langford? And I heard it. Councilmember Woodruff?
Present.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one recommendation for consideration to council, that is, I'm making a motion to eliminate Consent Agenda 10G from tonight's discussion.
Move by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Langford, any discussion on removing item 10G from tonight's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of removing item 10G, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will be removing item 10G.
Madam Mayor, I believe that there was probably one suggestion by a council member carryover from our six o'clock meeting.
Okay, I see Councilmember Kurt has her hand up.
Yeah, I would move to amend the agenda to add a workshop discussion on, on term limits to our agenda tonight.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
I heard several seconds, I bet I saw Councilmember Seavers can go up, so we'll credit him. We move and second it to add term limits under workshop discussion. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of adding term limits to workshops? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we will be adding term limits to the workshop discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there's no other additions or subtractions, I make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Move and seconded by Councilmember Langford. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved as amended. Citizen comments? Todd, do we have anybody signed up for citizen comments? Okay, I'll open it up just real quick. Okay, I see Lisa Wilkinson, if we can unmute her and let her start with citizen comments. Welcome, it's Wilkinson, Wilkinson, sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman. I appreciate a few minutes of your time. As a member of the City of Liberty Lake, I have a concern over the Liberty Lake Boys Academy that's being proposed. There's lots of marketing material being out. I know at this point, they have not proposed anything to the county commissioners and actually planning. Everything they have proposed is against the zoning regulations. But from the City of Liberty Lake standpoint, I know that's not in your control, but I have a real concern over the fire protection of many things, but what do I mean fire protection? We moved the fire station from on the other side of freeway on Harvard because of the concern that they could not get across that overpass fast enough to get to all the City of Liberty Lake people. Well, the fire station where it's now positioned down Appleway past Home Depot, trying to get across that intersection when they're doing all their proposed things at the stadium, that intersection is going to be a nightmare, and I believe backed up because they won't be able to get onto the freeway fast enough. So getting through that intersection will be hard for people living, you know, east of Liberty Lake Drive. I can't even imagine the nightmare of trying to get down Liberty Lake Drive to any of the homes outside of the city that way, but even in the city, the homes that are off Settler and those other areas right there. I think the fire, you know, engines would run into a lot of time, and I'm very concerned about the safety of our residents having that kind of traffic congestion. We do not have the right facilities for that large of a stadium and events going on.
Thank you very much. You've got another little over a minute if there's anything you'd like to add. We do appreciate your comments.
Well, I am also concerned, as a, as a citizen, the tax burden it was going to put on us as City of Liberty Lake, because I think the additional wear and tear on our roads and trying to get the bridge, we already have backups at certain times, and I think this is going to be a real frustration as a city member trying to get to the grocery store to get gas or get onto the freeway, all of those. And then I just think of the safety of our children riding their bikes or going anything at the trailhead. So anyways, because we, that's where the trailhead onto the Centennial Trail would be up over the freeway, which we, again, we invested a lot of money to create a great overpass for that walking path, but if we've got all that car traffic, it won't be safe. So thank you very much for listening to my concerns. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments, and at some point in the future, Liberty Lake will be allowed to weigh in, as will some of the other affected agencies, that, that has not come to that point, but we, we appreciate your comments and they will be kept on the record.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I believe E.G. Garcia would also like to make a public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, citizens. I'm going to be referring back to the workshop that happened at six today, and I listened to all of the deliberations, Councilmember Langford, Councilmember Kennedy, Foyer, Woodruff, and their passion for the citizen's voice is what I heard the clearest. I don't believe as a citizen that having a government determined term limits for its citizenry is the right approach. It is important that the citizens vote in or out members of council and including the mayor. It's their selection, it's their choice. I also, at this juncture, don't really believe that putting something that has not truly been vetted through the citizenry on a ballot, there has not really been enough participation. Yes, it has been on the workshop time and time again, and people don't normally- I'm going to be referring back to the workshop that happened at six today and I listened to all of the deliberations. Councilmember Langford, Councilmember Kennedy, Foyer, Woodruff, and their passion for the citizen's voice is what I heard the clearest. I don't believe as a citizen that having a government determined term limits for its citizenry is the right approach. It is important that the citizens vote in or out, members of council and including the mayor. It's their selection, it's their choice. I also, at this juncture, don't really believe that putting something that has not truly been vetted through the citizenry on a ballot. There has not really been enough participation. Yes, it has been on the workshop time and time again. And people don't normally come because they can't really see their input being valued at a bigger level. So I would suggest, I would hopefully make this recommendation that you hear me, aside from the council members that I mentioned, it's important that whatever the decision is, that the citizens have a bigger input in the direction it's going. Oftentimes, term limits are determined because council members don't like another council member, they don't want them on anymore, and that's a way to get them off. Sometimes term limits are decided because someone has baked their claim of that position in there forever. Please, open the decision up to a full participation. Make sure you do advertisements that pass people to get involved in this before you put anything to a vote. People will vote against something they have nothing, that they have not been educated or they may vote for something that they have not been educated on. Please take this into consideration. I appreciate and value your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. All right, Todd, is there anybody else? Okay, at this point, we have no more citizen comments. So we will be moving on in the agenda. We don't have any announcements, proclamations, or presentations tonight. I will move directly to reports. Firstly, a City Council report. Is there anybody from City Council who has anything to report on tonight? Councilmember Woodruff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I'd like to report that I had my first kind of official meeting as a council member with Phil Champlin at the Hub. He asked to meet me as a new council member and since I had not met him and had never been in the Hub, it was a nice way to get to know him and hear what he had about mostly as most of our businesses and nonprofits have. What are we going to look like moving forward? Of course, at that time, I met with him on March 8th. We did not know when we would be going into Phase Three or what Phase Three was going to look like. So we have a little more knowledge about that. But it was a great meeting and just wanted to let you know that he supports us as we support him. I'd also like to give a quick shout out to Todd Henderson and thank him for all of his help in getting me set up with all the electronic gear that it takes to be a City Council person. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Holly. All right, anybody else with a City Council report tonight? Councilmember Dunn.
Thanks, Chris. Hey, I sat in on last Tuesday's monthly Millwood City Council meeting. My objective in meeting the group was to try and introduce my actions with respect to the Spokane County Human Rights Task Force. It was a great chance to be able to describe and share with that group some of the actions taken by this task force, most of which I'd report is our work with a URL, reporthatebias.org. This allows people to observe and report what the hate incidents in the community that don't rise to the level of law enforcement. That it was interesting to compare operations at the small level of Millwood as a city, familiar in RCW in action, but different in style. It makes me reflect on our work here in the City of Liberty Lake and say we do it pretty well. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Any other council members? No, going one, twice? All right, hearing none. It's time for my report. I will make it as short as I can. As usual, lots going on since the last meeting. The biggest things of note, and I think most people have seen this on public announcements as well as within the emails to the council. So we did find out that out of the America Recovery Plan, Liberty Lake will be receiving $2.385 million of those dollars to help with, we don't know yet. So there is no guidance at this point as to what we can and cannot use that money for or the timeframe in which it needs to be used. So personally, I would like us to focus on helping our local businesses, residents. But really, until we have that guidance on what we can use it for, it's really kind of up in the air. So we'll kind of, we'll keep the council posted as we learn more. Probably be probably mid-April is what we're hearing before we have any guidance. So they kind of dangle that $2.1 million in front of us and then they, and they're quiet for a while. So I hope that we can use that money to do a lot of people, a lot of ways in our community. I had a good discussion today with Bijay from Liberty Lake Sewer Water and I learned something new that water and sewer districts were left out of some of that aid. So I'd be interested in getting his input and maybe partnering with them a little bit on some things. But again, all to be determined until we find out what that guidance is. So really great news. The first round of funding we had was under $400,000. So we concentrated on PT and E. Hopefully there are some other more creative things we can do with the bigger dollar. I look forward to that. No big updates out of the legislature at this point. The new budget is supposed to come out tomorrow, I believe, and it's the 17th. Yep, so that will be very telling. I heard a lot of discussion lately about the downtown, the Spokane Stadium being downtown instead of that Joe Albee. Doesn't really affect us, but it is something I'm keeping an eye on. COVID updates, my updates on COVID are always behind my meeting was, that I'm reporting on usually last week. The numbers are still going in the right direction. We're very close though, watching what the metrics are for Phase Three and staying there. So we still need to be very diligent in what we're doing. Good meeting for the GSI business leaders. I sent the council a copy of some of the discussions from there. If there's any questions, just let me know or ask our GSI representatives who will be here in a little bit. Actually, I believe Gary's already on, listening. Had an AWC federal briefing. Again, nothing huge, usually surprising there. You know, infrastructure, COVID, affordable housing and broadband access and affordability are among the top priorities there. I think that's really all I have to report on in the last couple of weeks outside of what I've already reported to you guys. So, thanks, we've got the Parks and Arts Commission. Waya, are you there? There she is. Good to see you.
I wasn't planning on really doing a report. We don't have a ton going on. We're meeting monthly and remotely. We have a current call to artists out for our Liberty Lake Together statue project. And we just put a new story in the Story Walk at Rocky Hill. And then as the commission, we've been really trying to focus on new ideas, new project ideas, new things that we can possibly start working on for next year and going forward. Questions?
I don't have any questions. Do any of the council members have any questions?
No, just thank you.
Your Pro Tem.
Yeah, I do. Lono, what's the status on the goats statue? We talked about this last year. Has that sort of gone by the wayside?
Well, we did not get enough submissions at the time. We got a few, but we decided to focus on other projects. I do want to revisit that. But with everything going on with COVID, we just said we would put it aside for another year.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, Lena, a quick one. Help me to keep track of Mark Bid's down at Spokane Valley Tech because when he has enough students to put together another Story Book Walk, the quantities are going to buy it. So just make sure to make sure that he keeps up with us so we can put one of those together.
Yes, we are hoping for next year just because I don't think that they're in person enough to get a project done. But hopefully next year, they'll be back and in person and we can focus on doing Orchard Park.
Right on.
Awesome.
Thanks for the great news from the both of you. That's great. Any other questions? All right, thank you, appreciate it. Library Board. I don't have everybody on here. There's Mr. Tim Olson. Good to see you, Tim. What's going on with the library board?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things to update from the library for you guys this week. We were interviewing people last week for the new director. Round one finished up last, we'd get five candidates total. We've got three that we've gone and asked for a second interview. Madam Mayor, you and City Minister Katie Allen will be interviewing those. They should be done and commenced by this Friday. So that's all we have on that particular issue and this is in your hands at this point. The other good news though is that the library is reopened. Hours are from Friday, Monday through Friday, 12 to 6 p.m., Saturday from 1 to 4. They're asking people to please limit their visits to 30 minutes or less. On Monday, March 7th, Janey did a quick opening and didn't really do much planning for that. We had 111 patrons that day, which was fantastic. Then on Tuesday, we followed it up with another 105. So the staff's been fully trained under COVID protocol and they're inviting all the City Council members and anybody else in Liberty Lake to come on in for a visit. I'd love to see you. Couple of updates coming also for the library. Tonight at 5:00, they did have a teen cooking class making some St. Patrick's Day mint chocolate chip cookies. Videos, the instructions are actually still on the Facebook site. If you guys want to go out there and make some cookies for your St. Patrick's Day favorite tomorrow. This is actually part of the assessment that we received from 2019 in terms of having more programming for the teen programs. So they're already working forward to on that. And then also, in case you're interested, every Wednesday, they are actually giving a Zoom Storytime now, which is a lot of fun. It's been incredibly popular. The staff's done a wonderful job in preparing for this. And actually, last week, and I'm not sure what's coming up tomorrow, but last week, they actually had a story about a guinea pig with a guinea pig in the story. So it was kind of fun to see. That's all I have from the library this week. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Tim. All right, now for the City Administrator Report.
Okay, everyone else was really brief and we're going to try to be just as brief, but I have kind of a long report. First, I do want to recognize RJ Stevenson. Today is his last council meeting. I know he's on the Zoom meeting. He's also taking minutes of our meeting. But I just personally want to thank him and publicly thank him for his years of service since 2011 with our city. His last day is going to be the first week of April and I just publicly, Mayor, wanted to thank him. And if any of you have time to wish him well, please do so.
If I may add to that real quick, and RJ's already heard me say this, but you know, when RJ started, we had been kind of through a little bit of a rough patch here with, you know, some downturn in the economy. And when RJ came, I kind of looked at him as sort of our knight in shining armor and I still do. You know, he came in, you know, was extremely reliable in the information he gave us and it was so nice not to have to second guess everything that we were given. Made for a lot less work for some of us who were always having to dig in and prior to that and figure things out. But RJ, he's done a fantastic job and I won't put you on the spot, but we're going to miss you and we appreciate the time you're giving us and the help you're giving us during the transition too.
So on that note, council, you will be receiving an invitation from Tate Hunter. We do have an employee appreciation and also a fond farewell to RJ on April 2nd from 11 to 12:30 and so be watching for that email. The other thing I wanted to mention before I get to my written report, which I think Todd's going to put up on the screen, the tracking sheet, I'm just going to hold it up, that we put together last week. It's very helpful for us. I hope it's helpful for you. And I talked to Ann about including it in all of your council package so you can see what workshops are currently scheduled and what workshops are in the queue. And so just as a reminder, next, excuse me, March 30th, which is two weeks from tonight, we will have a special workshop at 6:00 specifically on Capitol facilities. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my written report and I have a lot of help from a lot of the directors with the report. The 20% City of Spokane sewer tax, we did send our letter in as did other jurisdictions. I don't have anything else to say other than there's been a lot of press releases, et cetera, and it's been on our Facebook page and there's been a lot of questions that have been asked and answered. So I think, I really appreciate all the council weighing in and supporting our letter to the City of Spokane with your signature. I'm going to then move on to COVID-19 and actually I want to have Jen to give us a quick update. Jen is our representative at the regional level related to activities and events and a whole host of things. So Jen, do you want to give us a quick update?
Yeah, sure. So the Regional Health District has put together a work group consisting of local Parks and Recs Directors, City Administrators, Events and Venue Organizers and Coordinators, quite a few people who come together every other week and try to discuss some of the issues and challenges with organizing events during this time pending the phase we're in. So we've had a couple of meetings up to this point. We haven't really come to any resolution and of course, the last two meetings we had, we were in Phase Two. Now we're moving to Phase Three as of March 22nd. And with that being said, there isn't a lot of guidance published as of yet for events and activities. But they are telling us that they will have those published prior to March 22nd so that we can help our event coordinators plan and organize in the best way they know how. We do have several events. Yay, we do have several events. Did you hear me? We didn't have events last year. So we do have several events this year that are up and coming. The Easter Egg Hunt will be the first to kick off. However, it did change at the last minute as of last week and what she's going to do is an Egg Your House sort of event. I believe that the registration's already closed for that, but at least it's something. It's certainly better than nothing. No event at Pavilion this year. But then April 12th, all of our rec programs start up at our city parks to include Skyhawks. Skyhawks has been an incredibly popular activity to register for this year. I think people are really looking forward to getting their kids outside in the parks and playing in organized recreation. And so there is really good guidance that's been published from the Governor's Office according to those programs. April 24th, we are actually going to be doing Bulky Waste this year or Spring Clean Green slash Bulky Waste. Not really sure what we call it. But that'll be held at Town Square like in past years. We did not have it last year. Had to cancel that at the last minute, but that's in coordination with Waste Management. The flyers or the coupons will be going out in the mail about two weeks prior to the event and they'll be going to citizens of Liberty Lake that are subscribed to Waste Management Service. And then in May, we'll have Farmer's Market kick us off in May 15th. And then the Rotary Club is planning the Pancake Breakfast in a little bit different format. Don't have full details yet. We do have yard sales that they're working on planning for June 18th and 19th. Don't have exact details yet. Again, all of these events are being coordinated with the health districts to make sure, so the health district doesn't approve or disprove these events. The city will approve or disprove the event. But the health district is providing guidance and the event organizers' efforts to move forward with these events. And then there was one more, I was thinking, what am I forgetting? Fourth of July, obviously, we'll have fireworks. So that's good news, a bright spot in the year. Activities, events, like I said, planning forward. Recreation is moving forward with lots of registrations. Reservations at parks are low and, you know, I think until we know further what we can do as a city to allow private reservations at our parks, it'll remain kind of on the low until we get more detail on March 22nd. And then on another note, the goats came off their one-year quarantine and they are back. They've made an appearance at Trailhead, Trailhead down on the golf course and we'll be moving them, rotating them through. Yes, they had their shots, they are Pro Tem.
About the mask?
No masks, yeah, they don't breathe. They can't eat and breathe. So they're back and we're looking at switching snow plows to mowers and street sweeping starts next week. So I think that means spring is officially here. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Glad to be getting a little bit back to normal, thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. So Janey's going to give us a quick update on the library opening that happened a week ago Monday.
Hi, everyone. You get another update about the library. Tim did an excellent job earlier, so I just have a couple of things I wanted to add. Like he was saying, we did a surprise opening on Monday. I just, you know, posted to all of our social media, surprise, we're open. As people would call on the phone for curbside, surprise, we're open. Do you want to come in and get your hold? We had, and we had a good turnout this last week. We averaged about 100 people per day. We were open Monday through Saturday and our total attendance to the library was 525. The biggest comment we were getting was about our new doors. We have the automated doors now that open and close and people seem pretty impressed by those. So that was interesting to hear. So that was interesting to hear. As we, as you guys heard later in the week, Governor Inslee announced that we can move to phase three later in the month. We don't have any updates yet about the library specific guidance, so we're waiting on news for that. I'm on an email list with a bunch of other library directors around the state. And we've been kind of chatting about phase three, and the consensus seems to be, you know, we'll wait to hear what the governor's guidance is. But people are kind of wanting to take a gradual approach. So gradually expanding our occupancy and gradually adding in, you know, more computer usage and that sort of thing. Instead of, we're open for a week, now we're going to close, now we're going to reopen with all of our new stuff, just kind of keeping us open. And then gradually adding more and more services as, as we can and as things open up and as the, you know, as your staff is able to accommodate. So that's what our plan is so far. And so I would just invite you all to come in and take a peek and see all of the different changes that we've made to the library. I know a lot of you guys are coming on the tour, so that'll be a great time to show you what the staff has been working on as we've been close to the public.
Thanks. Thank you, Janie. Any questions? Looks like Councilmember Dan has a question.
Hey, just a shout out to the 20 at a time counter, Janie. Got to tell you, technically, like, that's really just fun to watch.
Yes.
Tim was saying, we got 110 people, and I'm like, 20 at a time. Okay.
Yeah, the kids really like that, too, as they're waiting to check out their books, or mom's like, what number is that up there? So it's been fun for everybody, young and old.
Janie, did you want to mention the Amazon Smile opportunity? I mentioned it to the trustees that I signed up for this thing about a year ago, and every time you order something on Amazon, some of the money goes towards a nonprofit, and I selected the Friends of the Library. So could you mention something about that?
Yes, this came up in the board meeting because, you know, with COVID, everyone has been using Amazon. You can donate a percentage of your Amazon purchases to the Friends of the Library. I need to look in exactly how you do this, but I wish you would have thought of this like last March, when everyone was stuck in their house and could only use Amazon. But that's a great way to put a little bit of your money towards the library.
Get it, get it on the website, and we can share that as well. Yeah. Okay, well, moving on, I'm on number four now. So the tour, just a reminder to those of you, thank you. We have a whole house going, looking at our, our city facilities. Just a reminder, it's March 22nd at 10:00 AM. Looking forward to it. You might plan on three to four hours, and we will try to visit every facility that you guys want to see. So looking forward to that. Trailhead bedding, I have one comment, and that is complete. And the golfers are using the driving range, and so Trailhead is very busy. The 23-acre land transaction later this afternoon, earlier this afternoon, I should say. I got an email from the closing title company, and so I will be signing some documents probably in the next week or two. So I know BiJ and the Sewer District are signing the documents as well. So as soon as that transaction is complete, I will let all the council know, but we're getting very, very close. Recruitment's underway. There's a lot of recruitment, as has been mentioned, our library director, our police officer, finance director, project manager. Funding commission, I think we have two openings there, an adjunct and a voting member. And then the library trustees, we do have an opening there as well. So just wanted to get that out. Polinkies lease, RJ is on the phone, and so he's going to give you an update on the status of their lease.
So, giving counsel, we're still, I'm working with the, with the owner of Polinkies on, on the lease and what their intentions are. When I did talk to him last week, what was interesting is that they do plan on moving Polinkies in about nine to 10 months, somewhere in that timeframe. But he has another, he would like to stay in the building and have a different type of restaurant there until we're ready to move on the building itself. So if he said, said that if we're okay with it, he would have a different restaurant, not a Mexican restaurant, either a burger or some other type of facility that he's still working on in there until we're actually ready to tear, remodel, or whatever we choose to do to close it down. So that's my report. So hopefully have something back to counsel here in early April.
Thanks, RJ. Okay, and then finally, just to close out with, we do have the one event that's pretty, excuse me, the spreading bulky waste event. The whole park is actually funded with DOLCC management, and it's a great opportunity. It is. You do get a coupon, as Jen mentioned, in your sewer bill, excuse me, in our garbage bill that you'll need to bring to the event on April 24th at Town Square. So Mayor, that concludes my report. I will, I know it's not on the agenda, but I do see Nadi from the Water and Sewer Board. I didn't know if you had anything you needed to report on today. I know I'm putting you on the spot. Or not. Okay, I'll see if you have anything to say. All right. So moving on to workshops.
Are you still there? I couldn't get off mute. Sorry. I had to hit all A to get off mute. I did have two things to report. I was going to save them for the end because I wasn't fast enough in the first citizen comments. But thanks for, for recognizing me. Just wanted to, one, remind everyone that unlike previous years, we are requiring everyone to have their backflow preventer tested this spring, or they're mostly for sprinkler systems. So everyone should have that on their sort of spring to-do list. The weather's super nice. Things are starting to come up out of the ground, so be thinking about that. You go to the Sewer District's website, there's a link to information and a list of local contractors who can do this. It's kind of a pain, I get it, but it's a lot less impactful than having our water contaminated like we had, what, a year and a half ago, and having to go through all that. So it's just a safety precaution we've got to take now. So that was one issue. Happy to answer any questions on that. And then the second thing was just wanted to acknowledge that it's been great to work with the city. And I think, as Katie mentioned, we're getting close to finalizing this property deal. And I'm glad that could work out so well, and we could keep that land in its sort of similar state to what it is right now for the citizens. So that's what I had to talk about. Any questions for me?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and I saw Mayor Protem's hand up.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. I appreciate it. I failed to look at my notes as we were going through for, for city council reports. And I failed to mention that the April 27th, for role clarity, the city did receive confirmation from Tom Brubaker that he'll be able to do that retreat.
Great, great news. Thank you. All right, there's none else. I will welcome Alicia Benson and Gary Ballou from GSI. Thanks for joining us. And Alicia, are you on vacation, or did you get back since this morning?
Back since this morning, back this afternoon. I love you.
Well, thanks for joining us, you guys. I mean, we've been looking at the, the new, at first agreement between our entities. And our council had some, some questions, and I understand you guys have had a chance to see that portion of the last meeting. But I'm going to kind of let you guys go first, and then we'll get the council asking the additional questions they might have.
Okay, I can jump in. Good evening, and thanks for having us. For those, I haven't had a chance to meet Alicia Benson. I'm the CEO at GSI. And then Gary Ballou, our VP of Economic Development is also here, and he and I can kind of, we can answer questions and touch on a few different pieces. I think from looking through the, some of the questions and, and comments that you had made in your last session, I guess I wanted to start with just a couple of kind of overarching comments, maybe a little bit of context setting. And then Gary can jump in on a few specifics, and then we have more specifics, depending on where you want the conversation to go and, and what types of questions you have. I guess what I'd start with overarching is that, you know, your investment in our organization, for many years, we've had a kind of a standard of your investment, but we haven't had a contract in place. And so not out of character that there be questions as we, as we think about the contract and what that relationship looks like. We now, this is probably our fourth year, implemented a standard contract across all of our municipal partners. So each of our cities in our county that are working with us in economic development, trying to make some sense around the role that GSI as the regional business development organization plays, and then our role as the associate development organization. That it was having some standardization to that was going to be really helpful for all of us as we reporting and our work. And so it was really broken into three areas, one of them being that there was a goal set of investment based upon population at 50 cents per. Per, and then the second piece being around a base investment in the organization. And the goal with all of that, after conversations back then, was that we wanted to ensure that each municipal entity had the opportunity to be represented on the GSI Board of Trustees, so that each entity was at the table and engaged in all of the conversations with the Regional Economic Development Organization. And so that base investment is at a minimum of $10,250. And then that there was an opportunity for special projects and things that may arise throughout the course of any given year. One that has been in place now for a couple of years has been the investment in Advantage Spokane, which is the virtual gateway to the region from an economic development perspective. And the City of Liberty Lake has been a partner at the table since the beginning of that. A couple of years ago, the role of administration shifted from Eastern Washington University to GSI as the ADO. And so there was a new agreement put in place amongst the 15 different partners of Advantage Spokane. And so that investment runs through the economic development contract and through GSI. But the partnerships kind of function separately in its work, but in alignment with the work of economic development. So that's kind of the big picture, how it's set up. One of the comments I make is that you have had a commitment to a $25,000 investment in GSI as the economic development organization. And so as we were putting it together, we wanted to honor the investment into the economic development-based investment of your, of your population. And then I utilized the balance to put that towards your base investment. And so if you look at some of your peers, your base investment would appear higher potentially than another. What I'd come back to say, though, is that that doesn't change the work that the organization is doing and what your investment is supporting. And I think that's really important because as the Regional Economic Development Organization, our work takes many different types of investment into the organization to support our economic development team, to support our talent team, to support our policy and communications team, so the work that we're doing day in and day out. And we can talk about some of those specifics. We did send over earlier today a link to our annual report from 2020 that hopefully you've received. If not, we can ensure that you get that after the meeting as well. But wanting to highlight some of the accomplishments and achievements as your regional business development organization in 2020 and give you a sense of the type of work that your investment is supporting on behalf of the region. And then we also have and can dive into specifics around the ADO contract, the metrics that are tied to that. I believe you also had some questions around the analytics of Advantage Spokane, so we can certainly address any of those pieces as well. And then also wanted to just give you a sense, when you look at as a whole, when you're a member of our organization, it creates lots of opportunities for engagement. And so one of the unique things we were able to put in place a couple of years ago was that we invested in a new management system that allows us to get a better feel for how people are engaging in our tools and in our website and accessing the different members that are part of our organization. And the City of Liberty Lake, just in the last 12 months, had almost 900 referrals based upon searches off of the GSI website. Folks looking at the City of Liberty Lake, looking to inquire different information, and 25% of those searches were directly off of your individual listing within the website. That's just an example of some of the tools and things that we put in place. And then the last couple of things I'd say is that the city has had an incredible engagement in the work that the organization is doing, both from your participation and the multiple different types of events that we do throughout the course of the year, like the annual celebration, or our virtual DC fly-in, or the legislative forum reception, so things that matter to you. And then also a high engagement in some of our committees and boards. Most importantly, your mayor currently, Mayor Kamiskas, is now on the GSI Board of Trustees. You've been represented this past year with your former mayor, and really an important opportunity to be at the table, as well as you have strong representation in the ADO Roundtable, which is a roundtable bringing together all of the economic development partners across the county, the Advantage Spokane partnership, and then the Public Policy Council, as we look at the policy issues that impact our region. And then another key and important piece is that this last year has been something none of us obviously imagined. And so the opportunity, we saw your former mayor and Katie on a daily basis, and at the emergency command and operations. And then that continues now on a, on a weekly basis, as GSI continues to be an important conduit of what's happening in the business community as we think about our COVID response and recovery, the continued need for business relief and response, PPE, those kinds of things. Again, we can talk about those specifics, but I just wanted to kind of paint a picture of the kind of breadth, both how it was structured, but also the type of work. And then we can, Gary, I can hand off to you if there's a couple of things you want to touch on, but really open it up to your specific questions that you may still have.
I'll just introduce myself and say hi. So I'm Gary Ballou. I'm the new, relatively new. I've been around for six months. Vice President of Economic Development for Greater Spokane Incorporated. I come out of the Tri-Cities where I worked in economic development for 25 years, including my longest gig was actually seven and a half years with the City of Richmond. I got to tell you, I don't miss nighttime council meetings, but I am happy to be here. And, and I did listen to the, the, the video and the tape, the questions you asked. I thought they were great. You know, if we want to dive in on some of the analytics and some of the things we're doing to raise the numbers on Advantage Spokane, or, you know, our outbound recruiting, or other elements of our ADO, our Associate Development Organization, and, and how we're working that, we certainly can, but I, I'd just like to leave it up to council and, and be able to answer whatever questions you may have.
Okay. All right. We will start off with Councilmember Langford then. Yeah, it's still on mute, Councilmember Langford.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Alicia, would you kind of, as a means of introduction, kind of narrow your scope to what GSI has accomplished for Liberty Lake? And kind of tell us what we've had as, as part of a gain to the relationship between you and the city.
Gary, do you want to start?
Yeah, we could start certainly on, on some of the more recent activities. And as we look at, like, say, our COVID relief efforts, which is really what we have in fact focused on in this past year is the 2020. So specifically with the, we, and we is going to be a collective we here. GSI partnered with a, a number of entities to do these. So I, I just want to make sure folks are aware, like, on PPE distribution, we worked heavily with the county. And the way to do that, but of the PPE distributions, we took a look, and there was about 180 businesses in Liberty Lake that, that took advantage of the PPE distribution. And those, those would be unique businesses. And then the grant awards, which ran through various number of programs, whether it be in Washington, or money coming from the county, or, or some of the other ways that, that revenue flowed, and again, partnership here. So there was 130 awards, 130 businesses received awards in the Liberty Lake zip codes. And for a total of 1.3, or just under $1.3 million. So those are really this year's efforts. You know, in general, we have our recruitment programs, our business retention, that's going back into the, the history. So I may not be the greatest one to answer maybe what happened before this past year, specifically on, on things that have assisted Liberty Lake with GSI's economic development efforts.
And I think that their example I'd add, you know, in the last year would be, we, you know, we specifically led a regional levy campaign in support of our K-12 schools. That's been a really important collaboration across the school districts, and so Central Valley School District was a key partner in that work. And I think one of the, the struggles or challenges that we have around some of our metrics is much of the work that we do is very regional in scope. And then there's some very specific economic development projects and activity, and that ebbs and flows. And then there's some very specific economic development projects and activity, and that ebbs and flows depending on what what the environment looks like and what the project or the entity is looking looking for. We have had a series of projects over the last couple of years that we have supplied information or background to detail the city of Liberty Lake. We haven't had a project win to celebrate recently. But I think that that's just this piece that that's that's kind of the long term game of some of those economic development projects as well. And so and then I think we can also talk about the the early work around Advantage Spokane and where that's headed. And again, that's typically taking a look at, again, at the regional scope of the Spokane region, but also creating a platform for how you can drill down. As anyone looking at Spokane, if they're interested in a specific area, they can drill right into the city of Liberty Lake, and it goes directly to you and to your site, and they can be able to engage directly with individuals within the city of Liberty Lake. And that was really strategically done after probably a year of conversations, knowing that people are kind of looking at the broader catchment area, but they're not necessarily landing one place or the other. We wanted to give them a visual and then allow them to dive right into the region. And so it's building that infrastructure and putting that infrastructure in place that's hard sometimes to have direct measurable, directly to one city or the other. And then the same would go with the huge amount of advocacy work that we do day in and day out, particularly at a state and federal level around issues that impact business or impact the way that we move goods and services. And so we can give you a full report on any of those pieces, but a lot of that advocacy work that, again, is regional scope, but has direct impacts to businesses and operations within the city of Liberty Lake.
And I'll also say, you know, it's it's more general, and I think this was was part of your discussion at the prior meeting where where you're like, okay, we understand GSI, you know, it's been covering the entire county and it's worked on some general things. So as we bring that down, as we look at like aerospace and the work we do with the aerospace sector and which is, you know, having certainly on the commercial aviation side is having some issues on that. We we work with companies like Acrophaut, who's Liberty Lake Company. And and so trying to create that whole ecosystem that supports these businesses and and helps those businesses grow. And so I don't want to say, you know, there's nothing specific there, but, you know, those general efforts really support businesses throughout the county, including in Liberty Lake.
Thank you. Councilmember Langford, did you have any follow up questions?
No, thank you. I appreciate the answer.
Councilmember Fuller?
Well, thank you, Mayor. You're coming to give a little explanation to where our funds are going. As a council member, I'm asked to approve to spend some money towards the GSI efforts. And I'm looking at this annual report that was given to us earlier today, a lot of great information, regional. I guess when I look at the contract, I'm wondering, is it possible to get an annual report that is a little more specific to Liberty Lake in how, so we can quickly identify how our how our funds are coming back to us in the in the way of supporting our businesses. And I understand your goal is to support the region as a whole. And while we love, really like our neighbors to the west, we really like our citizens maybe a little more. But is there any way to get a little more specific on the annual reports on how it impacts Liberty Lake?
So I'd say a couple of things to that. I think one, one of the offers, so I've only, I know, I think about this, I've been in the role here just, you know, a year and a half and right before COVID landed, so we haven't had the opportunity to come and meet. And then Gary's joined us in the midst of COVID. And so one of the things that he and I have been talking about is wanting to have more regular interaction with all of you. And so whether that's being able to do twice a year reports or quarterly, you know, kind of what what your interest is and or just on an annual basis, but being able to have a more frequent engagement around progress, projects, that kind of thing, we think could be of really great importance and value for us and for you. And then we can also look at some drill down, and that's some of what we're working through and really with bringing Gary on board is that we'll be able to pull out some specifics, and we can also, you know, show you the types of items that we're advocating for that have impact to businesses within the city of Liberty Lake and some of those kinds of things. And so we can work through having some, there's, you know, a number of different metrics that we can kind of slice and dice depending on what is of interest and value. And then in some of those areas of work, it's harder to slice and dice, but we can really call out some of those specifics for you as part of that that reporting and whatever frequency makes the most sense for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council? Surprised I'm not hearing more? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks. I really appreciate both you guys showing up tonight to help us out with this, to answer the questions so we can move forward. I've been involved with GSI, you know, for a long period of time prior to being on the council. And of course, religiously, since I've been on the council, other than this last year, we were unable to have lunches and things of the sort here. Always been an attendee of those, and I think it's been advantageous to the citizens in Liberty Lake. For me, it always comes down to the bottom line. What is a dollar amount? What is a commitment that we're being asked our citizens to get to give? And of course, what is the return? So I got a couple of questions around the finances. One question if I can ask is on the very first page of the agreement, second paragraph from the bottom. Do you have have that in front of you?
I do. I just need to pull it up.
Sure. Great. Thanks, Gary.
All right.
Question is jurisdictions that agree to invest with GSI agree to invest in the order of economic development activities listed and further agree to fund the financial requirements of each category before proceeding to the next level economic development. Is this in addition to whatever dollar amount we're giving to the GSI now? Are we going to be asked?
And Mayor Protem, can you give me the the paragraph again? I'm sorry.
Oh, that's quite right. Thank you. It's the second paragraph up from the bottom on the very first page of the agreement.
There we go. So I think it's, you know, as this this agreement was put together, it was to say you have your base investment. You have your base investment first, and then you cover the economic development investment next, that fifty cents per citizen. And then the the third step would be the the special projects or additional, the additional investment for economic development services.
So my, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
No, I I was just, so it's just to show that you 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 fill up each level first before you move to the next level.
Am I interpreting this correctly that there there the city might be obligated for further projects over and above what we're funding, help funding now?
No.
Go ahead, Gary. No.
No, you would be limited to the contract amount.
Okay.
To the what what the appendix A, the tool that's on there.
Okay.
If I can just add, the other projects would be things between the city of Liberty Lake and GSI as the ADO. So if there was a, and it may be that there was a regional study we were having done on a specific sector or a specific policy is, you know, pick what it might be, and the city of Liberty Lake would want to invest in that work as part of a regional effort. It creates the opportunity for, basically an addendum to the contract for an additional investment. But those would be annually, as discussed and negotiated and decided on by the council. The Advantage Spokane Partnership would be an example of where we really, out of request from many of the other entities, put that in as a special project versus a separate entire contract that needed to be negotiated separately. But that's a, it's left open ended in the standpoint so that we can have the initiative present itself, but not obligated to in any way.
Thank you, Alicia. I appreciate that explanation. I'd like to go back to the attachment A when we get down to, I see where the rubber hits the road, where it's a dollar amount. I understand the idea of the fifty cents per citizen. And I understand when I read the differences of the entry level at ten thousand two hundred and fifty up to, I think it's twenty four thousand nine hundred ninety nine. I guess the question is in my mind, and I'm sure other council members, how is it determined that we fall in the category that were nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars?
So we filled up the category of your pop, so we were working it based upon the twenty five thousand dollar investment that you've always been, you've been making in the past. And so we filled up your population percentage first and then the with the rest within the base investment amount that put you, kept you in that base investment pure area. We can put more towards one, and I say two things on the contract structure. One, now that I, that Gary is on board, and this is that we're in kind of our fourth year of this, we'll be, you know, looking at all of those different contract structures and does the fifty cents per capita make sense now? You know, going forward as it has in the past, or is there a different structure that would make sense? But kind of working within the bounds of what the the current structure is and how we've been working across the different municipalities who have been utilizing the contract structure over the last handful of years. And but wanting to ensure that we at least have the opportunity to maintain the investment of the city of Liberty Lake into the work of the organization on behalf.
Thank you, Alicia. Got a couple of other questions. Now, I appreciate you guys' time. I really do. It's very important to us. So I understand what you're saying with the base there. I know when when this contract came up this last year, it was really the first time we looked at, we're going to have a contract before we were donating extra number of dollars and it was sort of said at that on it. One of the things came up this last year was the possibly in proportion to what a city of Liberty Lake size, it will say eleven thousand five hundred people now, compared to a city of Spokane Valley with a hundred and ten thousand on it. Can you tell me what, for an example, Spokane Valley is paying on the base? The base amount they're paying?
Don't have it. Go ahead, Gary.
They would still be, they would be at the that base amount of ten thousand two hundred and fifty. And then the remainder of what they pay is going into that second level.
So are you telling me that the, can you give me just an approximate within a few thousand dollars, what you think that might be?
Their total amount, and I don't have that in front of me, though.
Just a ballpark is fine, Gary.
Oh, I I don't know if I would be, it could be a very big ballpark. So I prefer, I get a lot of numbers mixed up in my head. So I can, I can look it up for you here real quick and and get that to you.
Okay.
Have I have another question?
I guess where that leads me to is that, you know, individuals that I visit with or citizens contacted me because when it comes down to the dollar amounts and stuff, is it, is it proportionate to our city compared to a city of a hundred and ten thousand or a city of Spokane? I can understand the fifty cents per individual, because if they're a hundred and ten thousand population, fifty, fifty says. Oh, by the way, is there a cap on that fifty cents? On a population?
There is currently a structured cap on it, just fifty. It would be technically could be recalculated each time the census data is updated.
Great. And I think that's very fair. If we if we're all in agreement of fifty cents per individual and population, then I think that's that's more than fair. I guess it comes down to the base investment that I I thought it was somewhat out of proportion when we looked at this last year. And for the citizens that had an opportunity from last year to this year, and also from the last meeting. I think that's that's something that people are really interested in, that if we're eleven thousand five hundred Spokane Valley, I'm going to use them for an example because they're our neighbor to the west, they're a hundred and ten thousand. They're ten times larger than us. So we're paying a base of nineteen thousand or so. If they were ten times larger, somebody could assume incorrectly, I'm sure, that they would pay a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
And and Spokane Valley is at forty three thousand total plus their plus their Advantage Spokane payment, which would be higher as well because that's proportionate to the population.
Yeah, the fifty cents. I understand that. I think that's fair if everybody's going to be on the same wavelength. But in all honesty, for me, as an individual representing the city and their tax dollar, if we are nineteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars roughly, and somebody our neighbor who's a hundred and ten thousand, and they're a little more than than double what we are, I I have to look at, is this proportionate? That's kind of around.
Yeah. And so I think, I think the question, I think it's a and this could be a further conversation that we can have. I think that that we don't look at the membership investment based upon your size. That's a based upon the different entities, and this is regardless of whether you're a municipal entity or otherwise. It's around your investment into the work of the organization. And then we've had, when we structured the economic development contracts, it was an additional investment to support some additional economic development to really help lift up the economic development work in function within the ADO and within GSI. And so we were operating off of the the history and the commitment of the city of twenty five thousand dollars of investment towards that work. And so we can, we can restructure it into different buckets, but are really interested, you have had a long history of being at that twenty five thousand dollar investment, investing in all of the different components we've been talking about tonight. And now we're trying to kind of fit that and, you know, that commitment into the structure of the current contracts we have in place. And it's not a and so that's kind of how the structure is set up. And so again, we can work, we can work through that and have those, you know, have a continued conversation if you're looking at wanting to invest a different amount in totality, or you want to, you know, continue to make that investment, but would like to see more of it with an economic development specific versus within the general membership investment and operation side of things, we can do all of those conversations. I think that's, that's the, that's the wonkiness that we have right now, taking the kind of longstanding relationship we've had and fitting it into the contractual structure that we have in place.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering those questions. That's all the questions I have. I'm sure other council members have questions.
I saw Mayor Langford's hand up, and then we'll take Councilmember Woodruff. Go ahead.
Mayor, would you let Councilmember Woodruff speak first? Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Langford. Thank you for the explanation on the the base investment. That was one of my questions as well. How do we wind up paying nineteen thousand two fifty versus a base of like ten two fifty, the lower amount? So I appreciate that. And I appreciate both of your time to answer our questions. One of the things I'd like to know is how does GSI quantify all of the things that you do, such as the coordination of economic development activities? Looking at at what you have, like, for example, you advocate for a healthy business climate. You assist businesses with access to new services, you advance development of a workforce. To me, those are qualitative goals. How do you quantify that? In other words, if we came to you and said, how do you do this? What would you, what would you show us as far as hard numbers or some kind of quantification? And kind of the same question under the scope of work, under the EDPs portion. How are those activities under talent, voice, and growth quantified? You know, how do you let the partners know that you've done these activities and to what degree you've done them? Thank you.
So maybe I, okay, so I can start on the, so the economic development pillar with the with our contract with the state as being the the ADO. We have specific targets and numbers, so those can be, you know, recruitment activities and and the goal is outreach to over four thousand folks. And and I'll let you know, we 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 beat that number or or so, so we do have numbers that that we're looking at. And so one of the things that I'm trying to do is also, I know we we can talk about quantitative, but also getting back to the qualitative is is what are we doing in those outreach efforts? So when we're doing our business recruitment and expansion efforts, which is really talking to the companies you have and saying, you know, what's going on? What are you working on? Is there a way that we can help you? And then bringing in all the various resources, the community that might be available is really is making sure that we're having qualitative, good connections with our businesses. So so there's, you know, there's a number of measures we can do. And in numbers, you know, the numbers are important, but we also want to make sure that that the quality of those numbers are are good. And so we'll get into one of them is ready readiness and capacity building. And so that will actually be connections, activities that we're undertaking to assist primarily local, local governments to a certain extent, a potentially helping on a grant application or doing the economic development side of a grant application might count in that area. And so we have a certain amount of targets that we're trying to hit with that ADO contract.
Then I think, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, Alicia.
No, I was just going to say, you know, on some of the others, so, you know, policy is one of those ones that's it's it's a bit hard sometimes to tangible because the policy pieces take a long time. So we can, and going back to the question earlier around pieces take a long time. So we can, and going back to the question earlier around you know, kind of sharing our regular, I mean, we have a state legislative agenda that lists the different policy issues. And so we um and we get during legislative session, we get um weekly updates from our state lobbyists on progress on those different issues. And so when we get to the end of a session, we do, you know, we'll do a state session kind of recap and we can both call out, we call out the things where we maybe have been successful and um either supporting passage of something that was important to the region um or defeating something that was, you know, um impactful to the region, particularly we look at things like taxes for the business community. So it's just these balance of things. But we do an annual wrap up on those pieces um at both the state and federal level. Uh and then there's a lot of what I say, no, we just want to call them evergreen issues. There's evergreen issues and then there's issues that go from legislative session to legislative session. And so we're able to kind of look and um compare across those things. So that's an example of policy. Plus, we keep track of, we have a mobilization tool um that we put into action around specific um legislative pieces. And so we can, you know, as an example, last, not this current session, but last session um back brief before COVID, um you know, there were over, you know, two hundred and forty people that engaged in legislative outreach um around different issues and topics that matter to them. And so we have some of that data. Um talent's another one where it's hard um sometimes to be able to, but we have some specific specific programs that we facilitate and manage. And so we track, you know, number of students engaged, um number of parents that may have attended a workshop, number of teachers that have had teacher education. Um and or we track things like supporting regional um levy campaigns and that, you know, thirteen out of thirteen passed. And so it's those kinds of things that depending on the um area of work. Uh but we track those metrics at multiple different levels. You know, and then in annual report, you pick out a handful. Um but again, we can slice and dice. And then I think the last thing I'd say is that we've gotten um even smarter, not we, but smarter at how we collect information from around businesses in our community as a result of COVID nineteen. And the, as we've been administering and supporting grant programs and um EPE, we've been gathering and sourcing all kinds of data from multiple different partners around what their business community looks like. Um as we think about the diversity of our business community. And so there's a lot of opportunity and that has created a whole base, for example, where we were able to then communicate this, like this additional PPP relief effort um specifically targeted our smallest businesses. That's information that as a region, we've never really had that level of detail around what our business community looks like. And so um there's an opportunity as we look forward um to how is that can help us, you know, better support business retention and 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 outreach and those kinds of things as well. And so that's you know, a silver lining um as an example, some of the things that have come out of this last year as well.
Thank you very much. That's that's very helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Langford.
I yield.
Anybody else we haven't heard from? Councilmember Seavers? Dunn, Kurt, Foyer? Oh, wait, we didn't hear from Phil. Good, go ahead, Councilmember Dunn and then Councilmember Seavers.
Um thanks. Uh uh Madam Mayor, I I actually value highly the services provided by GSI and I was reflecting on the um vibrant economy and business development, business environment stated as a strategic plan uh objective for the city of Liberty Lake. Um within it, strategies outlined are business recruitment and expansion and advertising and promotion as a great place to do business. Both of these sections as developed by the city's council as tasks uh clearly outline uh promoting business recruitment strategy with economic development partners. GSI in the Northwest Partners, Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce, as well as cultivating economic partner development uh relationships. GSI in the Northwest Partners and Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce. Um I really respect and admire uh the recognition of the level of commitment of the city of the Lake Liberty Lake over time. Uh specifically that the objective of promoting our, I'd say, welfare as action and economic development, as well as the greater Spokane region is not um here today, gone tomorrow. It's something that's built up over time and it is consistent investment uh that results in, I'd say, deliverables. Um so yeah, I I value and support uh the proposed agreement as it's been presented. And I'd like to see it return to the consent agenda.
Thank you for your input, Councilmember Dunn. Uh Councilmember Seavers.
I guess uh I'll just continue on with what Councilmember Dunn said. I I greatly appreciate what GSI does uh in both uh economic development efforts for the region and and for our city. And I can't help but um voice that um it's, it can be very difficult to quantify your efforts specifically for a small city like ours, but I think uh put differently, when you boost a region, you boost all of its surrounding municipalities. I think that we get a lot of uh the efforts that you guys put into the overall region. So also uh to share that I appreciate um the effort that you guys put in this contract with uh and and sharing both the transparency behind your numbers. And I think there's a fair way that you try to put it with a base cost along with a population piece of it. So anyway, long story short, I I appreciate what you guys do and uh uh support moving forward with funding uh what you're asking for.
Thanks, Councilmember Seavers. Uh Councilmember Kurtz, if you don't have anything to add, I'll kind of jump in, but comment, I'll let you go first. So if you need to, you're good. All right. Um so yeah, so I've obviously long history of GSI being, you know, having sat on this at this table for over eleven years, as has Councilmember Langford. Um great relationship over the years. You know, I I think of companies like Comcast that you guys helped bring in here. Unfortunately, due to COVID, you know, they're they're doing, they've switched to more of a work from home model, but you know, they they were, you know, a great addition for a while and we look forward to them being replaced possibly with your help. Um RJ did just shoot me, myself and Katie, a note um that um something really for us to remember, you know, Liberty Lake, we have, we have no economic development budget um for ourselves, aside from partnering with GSI, very Spokane Valley um chamber um in the Northwest um partners group. But the Valley has a one million dollar budget and full five, full-time employees to do additional work um on their behalf that we don't. So um yeah, I see that we probably rely on them maybe even a little more than than the Valley does, but you know, I do believe that the you know, where we get the equity is the fifty cents per head um piece of it. And then um you know, the the rest is, you know, it it is somewhat subjective, but also objective as as you guys were going through. So um I think we've gotten a lot for our money over the years. Um obviously, you know, that's just my opinion on this. Um this will go to you guys for further discussion and vote. Um but if you guys are happy with the answers you're getting, if you'd like to move to put the consent agenda item back on there, we can. That that's up to you guys. Do we have any other questions for Alicia and Gary before we get into that? Hey, looks like we don't have any. Thank you guys so much for being here. Feel free to, oh, did you, did you really raising your hand there, Pro Tim?
Uh no, thank you.
All right. Um feel free to to stick around and I'm sure I will see you at one or more meetings this week. Um but yeah, if Council wants to go ahead and continue the continue this discussion real quick and decide whether you guys want to put it back on the consent agenda or make a modification to to the dollar amount. So I'll leave that to the council to take the next step and go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh yes, in our last vote, if you recall, it was a forty-two that it was, it would be removed and it takes one of the four individuals to be able to put that back on. I've already taken the step to do that and I requested in my meeting with Katie that that would be on the agenda for the consent agenda in our April sixth meeting.
Okay, that is just showing hands is okay, go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Do we need a motion for that?
No.
It's already, it's already off the agenda for today. So uh if if it just moves to the next one, there's no vote needed. No, it's Katie's already got it noted. So consider it on the next agenda. Councilmember Kurtz?
I just had a a question, maybe a point of order. If it's gonna go on the consent agenda, that generally means from our Roberts Rules of Order that we won't be discussed, there won't be discussion on it? Is there a more appropriate place for it?
Usually not lengthy discussion. Um we can always put it back into a shorter or another workshop to if there's going to be discussion with regard to the dollar amount.
Mayor, can I jump in for a minute?
Absolutely. Go ahead, John.
Um it we, you can make it as an action item rather than just on the consent agenda. That way you can have a a discussion about it if there's more discussion that wants to be had by the council. Um secondly, did I miss the amendment? Maybe I missed it earlier. Was it wasn't the agreement under the consent agenda under ten G? Or was that the one that was removed?
It was one that was removed by um by vote earlier before we approved the agenda.
Okay, my my mistake. Thank you. That's all I had.
That's okay. All right. So unless any of you have something, um we will put that on the follow up for next week's agenda under an action item. So in case there are some amendments that need to be made, we can have that discussion. Gary, Alicia, you guys have anything for us? Since you're here?
No, just thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your excellent questions and that that just know as a go forward, we're really committed to uh working with you and whatever, however that might look, whatever kind of uh reporting um frequency, I think um as Gary and I both have moved into these roles, we think um a little bit more frequency is going to be important because hopefully we can address some of these questions along the way. So really appreciate your time, your questions and your support.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And if you give me the stage, I always have something to say. So much to Alicia's chagrin. So um we are updating our comprehensive economic development strategy. You may have seen that we're going to grant for two hundred thousand dollars from the Economic Development Administration. That says really lays out it's a strategic plan for the entire region um for economic development. Um it is going to be a big activity. There's going to be a lot of outreach, a lot of community efforts. Um it will stretch and cover this entire county. Um so just be ready to participate and be excited about that. Um it 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 will be a a large undertaking, but hopefully fun and and energetic and part of our, how do we look at recovery? And also, how do we look at resiliency of our economy for whatever happens next? Because there will be something next. Uh and then also this summer, we'll be hosting, sadly not in person, but we'll be hosting the International Economic Development Council's uh uh future forum um here in Spokane. Um though it will be now a virtual event, but uh that was, that's going to be a great opportunity to highlight all the great things going on in Spokane uh and the region across a national audience.
Great opportunity. Thank you. We'll be looking for that. We can join. All right. So I guess we're moving on to our next workshop discussion. Uh Liberty Lake Police Department Police Officer Funding Proposal, um which is budget neutral. So I don't want to know who wants to take the floor, whether it's Chief Simmons or RJ.
Uh good afternoon. Uh good afternoon. This is, this is Chief Simmons. I believe RJ is has a lot of that information. He's been working diligently um with us to um to get this feat accomplished. So RJ, are you um unmuted there?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Um so at the last uh, I believe the last council meeting, we did uh Chief Simmons was uh proposing to add an additional officer and Councilmember Foyer uh responded back, if we could look at the budget and make it budget neutral, um that they would be open to uh to doing that. So with an officer comes also another police vehicle. So the proposal or the one way the way can make this budget neutral is there's two things going on. One is we did receive sixty seven thousand dollars back for twenty twenty jail services that we could put towards a vehicle. It's a one-time revenue source that matches up with the one-time vehicle cost that last five years. Um that those two would uh would offset each other. Um and funding for the police officer, since we are getting close to already um one-fourth of the way through the year, almost one-third of the way through the year, uh wouldn't be funding the officer at the full year proportion. Um and so looking at Chief's budget, we were able to uh look at specific line downs with supplies, services um and staffing uh it to come up with enough savings in his current budget to be able to afford an additional officer. And then looking long term and how that impacts a six-year forecast, we're still within range to be able to afford this additional officer going for six, going out six years. Um one of the things when we did a six-year budget beforehand, that something has changed with the police specifically that kind of keeps adjusting it is when we did their contract for six years, um we had uh between scales, what a buck on a dollar seventy-five difference in the line item adjustments. And one of the things that has changed is our officers um that leave, we kind of bring on new ones on to come at the lower scale. We weren't predicting that. So that kind of has slowed down the growth of the um police officer scale. So within that too, we can uh we have savings this year that we can um identify. So we can make a budget neutral. Um I can email you the notes I have on here um and bring uh the budget amendment would need the budget amendment that we would bring forward actually to be the add the additional FTE, but it would be budget neutral.
Great. So any questions? Go ahead. Um first, Councilmember Langford and then Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh RJ?
Yes.
Did I hear you say that along with the new officer comes with a new car?
Yes.
And is that an assumption that every officer hired gets a car?
Sounds like Oprah Winfrey when you put it that way. Yes. So the patrol officers, uh uh we have been the pattern, every patrol officer has their own unit. And I I would need Chief Simmons to to validate that. That's that's the process.
That's, that is, that is correct.
Excuse me, Chief. If we were continuing uh to grow uh and we got to thirty officers, we'd need thirty cars. So I I think that's a false assumption that needs to be looked at.
Sure.
Uh so let's just said enough. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh Councilmember Foyer had a question.
I think, Mayor. Um RJ, uh I I totally appreciate your effort on this and the and you're estimating a eight to nine month uh employment window, not a full years worth of salary, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
When we get somebody hired, it'll be eight or nine months left of the year. Um and then the sixty thousand dollar, sixty seven thousand dollar leftover from last year. Um so we could get through the remainder of this year neutral. What does it do to our budget for next year?
Um it, right now, it looks like with with our growth in sales tax, knowing that we have a large facility that's going to be built with cat um factoring those two revenue sources in, uh it it still keeps us with um, keeps us only yours solid, but it does put us in a good financial position. So it does look like we can afford that. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So um Chief Simmons, is there anything you you want to add before I ask my next question?
Uh no, ma'am.
Okay. Um so do you guys, uh council, is there a motion to bring this back? Um the budget amendment would be to add the FTE, but no dollar change.
Correct.
Uh Councilmember Dunn?
Uh Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that a budget amendment be brought forward reflecting one additional FTE for public safety. No change to total expense.
Right. Can I move by Councilmember Dunn and by Councilmember Seavers? Any further, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Langford, discussion?
Um just a, just a question that popped into my mind. Uh we're we're making the an amendment to the budget to make no amendment to the budget. So can somebody explain to me why we have to do it that way?
The um the 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 amendment needs to be the another number of authorized bodies that are in the department. Um we have that at a specific number and we want to add one more to it.
So we can add to the employee, we don't have to add to the budget.
Correct. Well, part of the budget adoption is a salary schedule and the number of FTE we have.
So let's just pinpoint that when we make the adoption, please.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, thank you for um help me for clarification here. Is it for the budget neutral looking at what's going to be brought back? That is strictly for the officer. That has nothing to do with the vehicle. Correct?
That is correct. We still feel like with the, yes, correct.
Thank you. Great.
All right, Councilmember Foyer.
Yes, thank you. RJ, just a pointed clarification, maybe to help with Odin's question. Uh page fifty-four of our budget is the one that you would change. That's where it calls out all the FTEs and so on and so on.
Gosh, um.
All right. I didn't mean you, you don't have to pull it up. That's the only thing that will change in our budget.
Uh yeah, there's probably, there's probably page fifty-four because I think you're looking at the police budget specifically.
Yeah.
All right. And then there's going to be a second page. All right. And then there's going to be a second page. Where it's the salary schedule that summarizes all departments. So there's two pages.
Right.
Good. Okay. There's no more discussion points. All in favor of bringing budget management back? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like I have it seven zero. So we will look for the budget amendment to include the FTE changes with no dollar change. Thanks, everybody. All right, moving on. So Parks and Arts Commission, Nancy Hill, welcome Nancy. Make sure we get you off mute here.
There I am. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. I'm the newly appointed person on the Liberty Lake Parks and Arts Commission as of January. And some of you may know me as the retired executive director of Scraps, which is Spokane County Regional Animal Protection Service. So naturally I, I brought an idea to the commission recently about requesting council maybe consider an off-leash dog park in our community. Liberty Lake is a very active community and we're blessed with very nice trails and park systems. And daily you can see pet owners walking their dogs and, and enjoying, you know, our beautiful area. Off-leash dog parks are really popular. According to the American Veterinary Medical Association, about forty-three percent of households in Washington State. Own a dog. And I'm, I'm guessing it might even be a little higher here in Liberty Lake. So right now the closest off-leash dog park is the one operated by Scraps and Spokane County at State Line at the Gateway Park. The Patricia Simone Laughing Dog Park and it's three and a half acres. The next closest one to that, you would go to Mission Park near Splashdown in the city of Spokane Valley. So we don't have a lot available in the immediate, nothing available in the city limits of Liberty Lake. And we're asking you to consider possibly changing that. One of the most important things about establishing an off-leash dog area is choosing the location. Especially in a community where one hasn't been developed before. You want to pick a location that preferably is in an area that's already an existing park. So you already have your infrastructure. If you look across the inland empire in Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, city of Spokane, you see a lot of areas that have been established as off-leash areas. That are just a little corner or a little unused section of an existing park. So you can take advantage of the infrastructure. That's already in place. We have a number of lovely parks here and I, I did a little drive around and this is a pretty high elevation. Proposal here for you today. We don't have to get into any real specifics about where they might go. But there are some possibilities, including the town square, which is nice because there's no residents right by it. And typically I know from my past, when you go to establish an off-leash dog park, you want to be very careful about choosing that first location. A lot of people don't want it in their backyard, although I've read some surveys across the country where it can actually improve your property values. There's some misconceptions about dog parks where people think that dogs bark uncontrollably. Well, dogs bark when they're bored. And when they go to the off-leash area, they're far from bored. They're happy. They're daylight use areas. So there's going to be no barking dogs at night. And they can really be a wonderful addition that many people look for when they're looking for a place to live. One of the main biggest expenses as an off-leash area is your fencing. Usually need something at least five feet. You need a double gated entry so that you don't have escaped, get, dogs getting out. Ideally for dog safety, you could have a small and a large dog area. If you pick a certain size area, you might dedicate a third of that to the smaller dogs and two-thirds to the larger breeds.
Nancy, I think what you froze on even here.
Rules for dog parks and those would be posted on site. So when we're looking at the infrastructure, other than the fencing, you need a water supply, ideally year round, but. They don't have that at State Line, for example. Owners will just bring their own water. You need parking, preferably a restroom. You need your doggy waste stations, which we have spread out already all over Liberty Lake. Those are simple. A shade structure if shade is not naturally occurring. Benches or picnic table or someplace for owners to rest and to watch their dogs at play. The dog parts park surface is a little bit more challenging because it gets a lot of wear and tear. Turf, unless the area is large, can take quite a beating. For example, many of the parks like Spokane Valley uses crushed granite. In the parks over in the Coeur d'Alene area, they prefer crushed sand and gravel where it holds up and there's minimal maintenance. You'd have the appropriate signage to help make people successful, not only the rules of the dog park, but some etiquette. By terms to give them an idea of how to utilize the park to everyone's best advantage. You can enhance a park by adding agility equipment or even a dog, dog wash station. For a pet to get cleaned up as they leave the park. When you look at funding, the primary funding source would be the city of Liberty Lake. But there may be grants available. You may be able to sell some sponsorships. And citizen individual donations from businesses supporting the project is also a strong possibility. The maintenance would be done primarily by the city, but we could form a volunteer group that can do the simple policing, screen cleanups. But I found through the course of my career, when pet owners that go to dog parks are the responsible pet owners. So they're going to clean up after themselves. They're going to police each other's dogs even. It's surprising. The little community feel that a dog park can have. And so the maintenance is minimal if you get the right surface covering. Like the crushed sand or gravel and, you know, maintenance on a fence, of course, is minimal. And you're not going to have a lot of vegetation like a tree or bushes because they would take too much of a beating. So there's none of that sort of maintenance. There's a number of parks, as I said, in the area. Coeur d'Alene actually has six off-leash dog parks, city of Rathrum. I had a nice chat. With the Parks Director there and they just established one in the corner of their new majestic park and used a portion of a swale to do that. But I think it would be a great addition to our community and I believe you would have a lot of community support for such a project. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Council have any questions? Councilmember Dunn?
Hey, I'm grateful for the collected information, Nancy. It really puts into practice the mechanics of being able to assemble such a project. To be honest, the concept of, you know, an off-leash dog park has been discussed in many circumstances, but to have. Really the framework of what actually the do's and don'ts and the best practices really puts into, you know, visualization of what would be needed in order to proceed. So I'm very grateful for the assembled information.
Thank you. Councilmember Seaver?
Nancy, I appreciate all the information you're bringing to us today. I'll second what Councilmember Dunn said that. This is great information. Interesting to hear that existing park spaces are oftentimes some of the best areas to use. I just had a curiosity, sorry if I missed this at the beginning of your presentation. Is it a recommendation of the Parks and Arts Commission that we establish a dog park? Or is it just more of a presentation because it's a topic that's been brought up in the past?
The commission is in the process of discussing it. We anticipate having it on our agenda. Jen had asked me to come forward today and just to give you a look at what we were talking about. And certainly we'll have a recommendation coming out of the commission. And then if council needs more information. I've, I've kept this pretty high elevation, but I can dig down and provide you additional details if you have an interest.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? My suggestion was going to be, and we are having our capital facilities plan. While our focus is going to be on existing priorities, this might be something if we have time that we feel touch on during that meeting.
One, one thing I, I'll leave you with is if you use an existing park and find a, a corner or an area, you can start small. The one in McEwen Park, when they did their redo over there is only a quarter acre. And it's a nice little pocket park and the city of Spokane just put one in down near where KHQ is. Towards the Maple Street Bridge, they put in a pocket park. So it doesn't have to be a big commitment initially, or if you have some, some extra property, it can be larger. But just to get us kind of in the groove and thinking about it and thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Nancy. Appreciate it. Alrighty. So next one, we have added term limits to our workshop discussion. So Councilmember Seaver?
I, I don't know if we need discussion first, but I'll, I was going to just go ahead and make the motion. Let's see here. I move for staff to bring back language to council. To consider for adding term limits to an upcoming election.
Second?
Okay, move in second to ask staff to bring back language for potential addition to a ballot. Is there any discussion? Uh, Councilmember Kurt?
I think based on our discussion earlier, if we're talking about specifics, maybe of the language. That I would suggest three terms. And to go.
Go ahead, sorry.
Is now the time for the details or not? I, I, I'm.
It's, it's discussion, yes, discussion. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The other thing that as far as language, not potentially for the ballot, but for the background information that we would operate off of, if that makes sense. One of the thoughts that I had was regarding, regarding appointments and how those would count. So if you took Holly as an example. Holly, since she was appointed and will run for her space, the seat. The appointed term would not count towards the three term limits. Does that make sense? If you're using Holly as an example. So I, I wanted to throw that out there to see if people agree with that or not for the proposed language.
Go ahead, Councilmember Langford.
Yes, thank you. Two things, just to let the audience know that one of the reasons that we're asking for this to be put on. And to have staff brought it back for the election is because we have a calendar to meet for any elections. They'll still have some discussion and materials available for the public as we move on. As in accordance with what. Counselperson Kurtz says. The, the language would be fairly simple. It would refer to full four-year terms. That's when the start would count, or that's when it would start rather. The count would start upon the first four-year full term served, which makes allowances for your. People being. On the council to fill in some vacancies. And also with regards to a comment that was made earlier regarding one for mayor, one for the. Council, I believe that that can be condensed to elected officials. Okay. And wouldn't have to necessarily run one, one for each and one referendum or ballot for the other. Collectively use that term. Thank you very much.
Right. Good, good point. Thank you very much. I'm going to move, hold on. Dan dropped on me. I got to move him back to the main screen again. Hold on. There he is. Okay. So if there's no other discussion, it sounds like it's time to take a, take a vote. The motion was to have staff bring back language for a possible ballot measure. I'm considering and obviously taking into consideration the discussion points in that language.
Does Sean have his hand raised?
I don't, no, I can't tell. Sean, do you have your hand raised? Just speak up if you do.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I can't see you. So I'll find you next time. All right. So hearing, hearing no more discussion, all in favor of staff bringing back that language. Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Two, three, four, five. All right, seven ayes and so none opposed, so motion passes. So we'll look for that language. Hopefully we can get that. Target next meeting, depending on how long the research takes.
Yeah. So I think we have that. Extra Tuesday in March. So we will shoot for April sixth.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. All right. So now we're on the consent agenda. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council consent agenda, motion to approve February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one special city council minutes.
Second?
Okay, move in second by Councilmember Seaver. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, two, if you would.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have seven out of seven. All right, motion passes.
Consent agenda B, motion to approve February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one special city council minutes.
Second.
Thanks. Move in second by Councilmember Seaver. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seven out of seven, motion passes.
Consent agenda C, motion to approve March second, two thousand twenty-one regular city council minutes.
Second.
Lots of seconds. I heard Councilmember Seaver, move in second by Councilmember Seaver. Any discussion? I'm not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
E, motion to approve March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one vouchers of the amount of five hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Right, move in second by Councilmember Seaver. Any discussion on vouchers? Questions? Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is kind of petty, but I just have to ask, on page five, there's a charge for seven hundred and twenty-five cents. Your first aid and dry erase board.
Can you repeat that again? Now you're, we're cutting out a little bit.
Sorry, RJ. On page five, third item.
Third item, okay.
That's for more than one first aid kit and dry erase board, right?
Yes, there's probably multiple items on that. I can, yeah.
Second, thanks.
All right, any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Consent agenda E, accept bid from Sellers Masonry, authorize a total of eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents. Which includes a ten percent contingency to repair the Harvard Parkway Roundabout.
Second.
Can we, can you restate the, hold on. Councilmember Dunn, can you restate? You had said Harvard, instead of Harvest. I just want to make sure we get that right.
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you for catching that. Harvest Parkway Roundabout.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Move in second by Councilmember Seaver. Any discussion? Councilmember Langford?
Yes, ma'am. Katie, is there any use in the council considering the placement of, of steel pole ballards? Close, closer to the actual cement work that may stave off some potential damage to it? Would that be something worthy of consideration?
I'd like to look at it and, and get back to you. I know Ben's on the line as well. And this is where I'm kind of, I need some time to think about. The crash, so to speak. And I know with your background. Councilmember Langford, you probably understand what I'm talking about. There's certain things called breakaway things and we wouldn't want to put an object in there that was. Problematic and a liability to the city. But let me make a note and get back to the council on that. It's a good suggestion. I did, I need to talk to people that do this a lot more than I do.
All right, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
All aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes seven out of seven.
Thank you, Mayor. F, motion to authorize the mayor to sign to purchase agreement for a John Deere nine thousand nine A Terrain Cut Rough mower. Thank you, Mayor. F, motion to authorize the mayor to sign to purchase agreement for a John Deere 9,009A Terrain Cut Rough mower. An amount of 58,424 dollars and 85 cents.
Second.
Moving second by Councilmember Reivers. Any discussion? I saw Councilmember Foyer's hand up, and then Mayor Proton.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, um, reading through all the paperwork, I would speak in support of staff's recommendation for option two. So, thank you.
Jen? I, I didn't see, there's no option two in the motion.
They look at two different options, and so it reads where to purchase rather than repair.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so it doesn't affect the motion. So I'll make sure. Correct? Okay, Council, uh, Mayor Proton?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Is, is this mower utilized for just general grass in, in park area, or is this related to the golf course?
This is, yeah, golf course, and mows the rough.
So this is specifically designed for the golf course and will remain only for the golf course?
Uh, it could possibly be rotated down at a later year to a park or an open space, so it does have the capacity to mow other areas. But initially, it will be for the golf course.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hey, hearing none. Oh, and thanks Jen for including the information that that includes trade-in for the old machine. I appreciate that additional detail. Any, alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Not heard, motion passes, seven, seven.
Next item H, authorize, motion to authorize the mayor to approve the purchase of two police vehicles. And approve the quote to outfit both vehicles for a total of 97,592 dollars.
Second.
Moving second by Councilmember Reivers. Any discussion on the two new police cars? Councilmember Langford?
Purpose of both vehicles?
Chief?
Yeah, the first, the, the chief's vehicle, currently I am using a vehicle that's completely outfitted for patrol, which I don't need. It has 20,000 miles. Will rotate that vehicle back to patrol. That'd be an additional patrol vehicle that we'll get. The second vehicle will go to the school resource officer who has, also has a a vehicle that has about 50,000 miles right now. That'd get rotated back to patrol. And his vehicle will be used as a community-oriented policing tool. It'll represent, he's working with the school district and he's also working with some community members to come up with an idea for a, a vehicle that represents not only Liberty Lake, but also the school district. Um, and I think it'd be a great tool for COP purposes. Um, and also just to represent Liberty Lake in the school district, Central Valley School District. And, you know, just within, it's, it's historically, those types of vehicles have worked really well in communities for, for that type of engagement, so.
So Chief, what I hear you saying is that you're rotating your current car back to patrol, okay? And then you're gonna take a car of 50,000 miles and put it back into patrol.
Yeah.
So, uh, then we ordered a, a new car that I thought was going to patrol. But is now specialized for school resource, so I, I would be, if I didn't ask the question, how much is the school district paying towards that car?
Uh, zero.
Okay, I can't support that this time, Chief.
Okay, well, the school district pays zero for the cars now, so.
Not, not flagged with their, with their school district, et cetera, okay? I'm not into advertising for the school without them chunking in some cash. Right, we've already been taxed once by our city, and then they've been taxed again by the school board. And now we're gonna start providing not only people, but cars. That's a no-go. But that's just my opinion, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Dunn and then Mount Mayor Proton, I think after that.
Hey, um, RJ, quick, can you remember how many cars we've given to TECO? There's those little towns down in the South County.
Um, I have to do the research. I know we've sent one down to, we sent one up to TECO. We did send one down to the Rockford. And one of the cars we've, we, I don't know if it was one of our cars, it was another car that we did for the, that police dedication car that we have.
Hey, I'm super grateful. I just wanna recognize that it's great to see the actual residents who paid for the car continue to get benefit after we've given cars away to the towns that are south in the county, so, thanks.
Mayor Proton, I think you had your hand up.
Um, I'll pass.
Alright, any other discussion? Uh, Councilmember Kurt, and then Councilmember Foyer?
Um, so Chief, with the, with the ask for the two additional cars, are we gonna have the exact same number of cars as professional staff, employees, or is there gonna be extra, I guess I'm asking?
No, so, so, we're gonna have to purchase cars regardless. Rotating these two cars back will give the new officer that will start in mid-April a vehicle. And if this new position is approved next month for the additional offer, officer, that will provide that officer a vehicle as well.
Okay. If I can ask a follow-up? Um, I'm just, I guess I'm wondering if, I guess for a second car, if we wanna wait until we approve the officer first? Does that make any sense to anybody, or? Otherwise, we would have an extra car.
Well, Chief, you have a, I would like, can you, that first?
I, I can, and I, I don't know if this would be a great time to bring this up, but if if I can have my screen shared, that'd be great. And I just wanna give everyone a a good view of what our fleet looks like right now for patrol. And I don't want there to be, I don't want there to be.
Go ahead and try to share, I think I gave you permission.
Okay, hold on just a second. Can everyone see that spreadsheet?
Now we can.
Okay. This is what our current fleet looks like right now. We have several patrol officers that are working with cars that are eight years old, or seven or eight years old right now, and almost 100,000 miles. Um, as you know, the recommendation nationally is, I believe, 80, 85,000 miles. Even though most go with 100,000 miles, there are so, also some studies out there that say that, and I know we're really good without, with not letting our cars idle, especially since we're a smaller agency. Which you also have to take in consideration, especially in the wintertime when officers are out and about and they're on calls, their car is idling and that, that actually adds to the, the mileage, according to the fleet studies. But the actual mileage that we're working with right now. You can see, we have a 2013 with 96,000 mile, that's 96,000 miles, that's assigned to a patrolman. We have a 2015 that's assigned to a patrolman with 98,000 miles. We also have one with 115,000 miles, 106,000, or that, oh, I'm sorry, those are the two spares that we have. So we do have two spare cars for emergency purposes, or if anyone has any vehicle maintenance being done, they can grab one of the spares. But you can see that we are working with an aging fleet. So eventually, pretty soon, a lot of these cars are going to have to get replaced. Darren, Sergeant Morgan and I have been working diligently to find the cheapest option for us, along with the best option. And while consult, consulting with some other chiefs and leaders in our area, we, we found through the state bid that the Dodge Charger, which is on that agenda item, is the cheapest and most viable option for us right now. And to outfit those, and I'll give you an example, these two, again, the total is 97,592 to equip those. That is about 13,000, almost $14,000 cheaper than asking for two Ford Explorers. So we've been doing our due diligence to attempt to find, knowing that we have an aging fleet. Doing the best that we can to try to figure out what's gonna be the best and cheapest option for us to start replacing these cars here in the future. So, again, my idea was to take these two, two cars that were, again, very early in their, in their life, rotate those back to patrol and, and purchase these two. And respectfully understanding what Councilmember Langford was referring to and one of the things that I've thought about. But, you know, in, in all actuality, we're gonna need cars in future. In the near future. And just one more, and one, and just one more thing on that, just some research, and I'm an evidence-based type person, so. During the research, I know the National Department of Transportation says that the average civilian places about 12,500 miles on average per year on their vehicle. The average law enforcement, when I looked at, just tried to look at our comparables, agencies that were comparable in size to us that was reporting their mileage, and they were around 25, 30,000. And I just requested that we start to keep track of our mileage as well, so we can document the total, so we can quantify the total number of miles that we're driving on average in our vehicles.
Thank you, Chief. Now I think I lost track of hands. I think I had Councilmember Dunn, then Mayor Proton, then Councilmember Foyer, and then Councilmember Kurt. Councilmember Dunn, go ahead.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, or, or, or Tim?
Oh, leave me to last, considering you might bring up what I was gonna bring up.
Okay, Councilmember Foyer?
Hey, alright, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Chief, couple of questions for you. The way the agenda item reads is, you commented earlier that one of the cars was for you, but and the one that you're currently using is already equipped and you were gonna put into, with one of the other officers. It, the way this, the way I read this, and maybe I'm not understanding it properly, but to outfit card one and two. It, it's a different number, but there's, is, is your car still able to be on patrol?
Yes, it won't have a cage and it won't have a cage and a couple of other pieces of equipment, gun rack, those types of things for the long guns, because I don't carry a long gun. So some of the things that I don't need that are in the car now that I'm using, that I don't utilize, gun rack. The equipment in the back for storage of less lethal weapons, those types of things. So it's, it's actually, it's not, it's not kind of, it is a waste of a, of a viable patrol car for a patrolman to use right now.
Okay, and then another question if I can, looking through the cars themselves, they're both two-wheel drives, is that normal?
No, they're, they're all-wheel drive. They're, they're, they're V6, supercharged, all-wheel drive, is what they are. And, and I know it says, but they are all-wheel drive, the police package.
Yeah, page one of the email has all-wheel drive on it.
Okay.
Page two.
I'll, I'll look for that. And then I guess my last concern is, goes back to Odin's comment about signage regarding the school, not that I don't wanna support the school, because we all do. But I think there's maybe further discussion to be had there. Thank you.
Okay, and then you had Councilmember Kurt, and I think Councilmember Langford, you had your hand up as well. Go ahead, Andy.
Um, the, the questions that I had were around, I had two. Chief, you talked about mileage being an indicator of like useful life of the car. Are there other indicators of wear and tear and when you should replace a car versus just the mileage?
Um, yeah, it's, you know, the, the maintenance history of the vehicle, whether or not you've had any issues with the vehicle. Typically the same things you look for in your civil, civilian vehicle. One of the other things that we look for, and we don't necessarily have that here, because we don't, as an agency, we're not in our policy right now, we don't perform pit maneuvers. Or post-pit maneuvers. So a lot of times in, in those situations, you're having contacts with other vehicles. So you try to keep track of the, that, you know, that, the, the damage that occurs through a pit, what they call pit and post-pit. That is, the vehicle that actually makes the first contact with the vehicle, any vehicles that subsequently make contact with the second vehicle. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that could go into it, but for us right now, it is, it is mainly mileage and the history of the maintenance on the vehicle, if you've had any trouble or issues with the vehicle. On this spreadsheet, this is the beginning of the way we record that right now. We also keep each and every copy of receipts of maintenance for the vehicles as well, to document the history of the vehicle.
Okay, if I can, my, my second question, you talked about going to start keeping track of mileage for the cars, and I know the officers do take the vehicles home. I'm wondering if there's any sort of separation between personal mileage versus on-duty mileage, or just how that works? To have a little bit of an idea of that and how that plays into the mileage and useful life of the car.
Okay, no, that's a good question. Actually, when we were looking at take homes for the sheriff's office. Initially, I did a, a, a study, actually a written study for Ozzy when he was the association president. And looking into that, and I can tell you right now that a majority of our officers live fairly close to the city, so there's not a, a ton of mileage from officers that live, you know, outside, you know, 20, 25 miles from the city. One of the things that you do have to consider. And, and I know this is maybe a little, I don't know, I wouldn't say difficult, but there's a huge difference in the mileage of a pool car and a huge, a huge difference in the mileage of a, a patrol car. I can tell you, if you can still see my, my, uh, screen. It would be hard-pressed if we had a pool car to still have it in rotation seven years later, because that car is being run 24 hours a day. Remember, on average, a patrol car, for our comparables, just again, based on my research and also my, my training and experience. You're putting on about 20 to 25 to 30,000 miles a year on that car. Because it's being run 24 hours a day. So those are some of the things you have to consider. And, and I can tell you some of the other variables that have been identified in studies that say that take-home cars are, you know, a better option for cities, counties and states. Is that when officers are assigned cars, they take care of them. The, the, the maintenance is done on time, they're, they're kept clean, and I mean, that's your office. And coming from someone who has worked for several agencies, where, you know, where we didn't have take-home cars for a while. Yeah, those cars are in much better shape than a pool car. So, you know, just to answer your question, I don't think that, just to regress, I don't think that the, the the, the mileage to and from Liberty Lake by the officers to get the work is a factor. I don't think that's a huge factor. The factor is patrolling.
Okay, hey, can I ask one more? Kind of along where you're at, if that's alright? So like a 25-mile-a-day round trip to and from work every day over a year would be about 10,000 miles on a car, just to get from, to work and, and from work. Is there any thought to, instead of having a pool car, have, have the cars garaged and have the officers come in? That may be a logistical nightmare, but I was just wondering if if we're looking at maybe reducing some of the mileage on the cars to prolong their life a little bit, if that might be a solution to?
Yeah, that could be a solution, but one of the things that you're cutting down on our response times as well, especially as we get into, I mean, are you gonna do that for a detective? Is the detective gonna have a take-home? You have Derek Arnold, who's in the air unit right now, he's gonna need a, a patrol car to get to and from, you know, response time. Or to be able to respond to and from wherever he needs to get to as a member of the air unit. And also, you know, getting officers that are willing to work overtime and, and, I mean, it could be a viable option. I, I don't know what that's gonna do for the morale and the climate of your agency to take away of patrol cars. I mean, that's another factor. So I, I, I don't, you know, I don't know, it may, it may eliminate some of that mileage. But, I'd have to, I'd have to look at, you know. Again, I'd have to quantify that, I'd have to see where everyone lives and get the mileage, you know, that, that is, I mean, that's a, that's a general, you know, taking, thinking that everyone lives 25 miles away.
Right.
Yeah, you know.
And I believe that it's part of that also. And I believe that it's part of that also in the contract, isn't it, Chief?
I believe so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, it is part of the contract.
Right.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, thanks, Chief. Question is, when I first looked at this, 97,000, talked about up at both vehicles. So my assumption was, they were both going to be outfitted the same way, and they could be utilized by any police officer. I understand that yours is not going to be the same. I guess my question is on the resource one, for the resource officer. Is that going to be one of the newer ones, and that will be utilized over at the school?
Yes, it'll be his patrol vehicle, so it'll be fully equipped for, for him as a patrol officer. Again, and, you know, he's coming back to patrol for the summertime as well, so, you know, I consider him my, my three-fourths officer, you know, I have him basically one-fourth of the year, and the school is paying for a majority of his salary for, you know, three-fourths of the year, so he's at the school. I can tell you, as a school resource officer, and having worked with school resource officers, that they are one of the most valuable members that you'll ever have in a law enforcement agency. And some of the, the things that you can get accomplished through your school resource officer, not just from the schools, but from also from a social services standpoint, et cetera. You know, I'm really excited about that, and so I, I really want to insinuate and highlight the school resource officer's involvement in the school and also the community. And I've seen what it's done, having, you know, again, been an ex-school resource officer, you know, and, and looking at, you know, other school resource officer programs, not only in our state, but around the nation, and going to those, those conferences and talking about, you know, what works and what doesn't work, and, and what, you know, you know, highlights your program. That's, that's what I'm trying to get to with, with, with Officer Hoehlhausen in that program.
Thanks, thanks, Chief. Also, I wanted to say that I agree with you, the value of the resource officer is outstanding. I've, I've spent time at Career Day and watched a resource officer, how he relates to the students. I've seen how the students come up and want to ask questions and stuff. There's no doubt that it's a positive thing. But also, I'm one that, that I feel that, I don't want to double tax the citizens here. For as far as I'm concerned, if you need the vehicles, we ought to get you the vehicles. But my question would be, is that if the resource officer is going to have a brand-new vehicle, and we have all these other vehicles, which you pointed out, I didn't realize we had too many high-miles vehicles. Wouldn't it make more sense, and this is going to be your call as far as I'm concerned, to take a brand-new vehicle instead of letting it sit at the school? Take, take something with a high miles, and let him utilize that?
Oh, yeah, we could do that. We could do that as well.
As far as I'm concerned, it's going to be your, your call. I just want to throw that out, because, because what I try to look at is that, ask questions of also what the citizens would ask. The other thing I want to ask is this, this to me, when we, when I read this motion, it was a no-brainer, but now I see that there's a separation, because one's a resource car, which some council members, including myself, has asked him questions. I wonder, Council, should this be split into two? Make a decision on each one individually, because they're not identical vehicles. I just want to throw that out. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds with this thing.
Councilmember Foyer.
Kind of, thank you, Mayor. A question for the chief, and one for RJ, maybe RJ first. Just to clarify what I heard earlier, the 67,000 jail services refund from 2020 will apply to this purchase?
Correct.
Really, we're talking $30,000?
Yeah, yeah. I think RJ froze.
I'm sorry, no, I did freeze, but I did it, I did it personally. Yes, I mean, if you look, yeah, you're looking at the net on there, the, using the full jail resource, yes, you're, that, that is the number you're looking at.
And I appreciate the way it's been presented, because it shows us what the cars, the cost of the cars are, plus the outfitting. So thank you for that answer. And then my second question is for the chief. I, I know that you don't need the outfitted car for your, for your, your use, but when I get a new vehicle, somebody in my crew gets to hand me down. So if you don't outfit it fully, if you hand it down eventually, is that going to be a detriment?
No, it's, so it's, it's no different than the former chief's vehicle. It wasn't fully outfitted. It will last me and the next chief, and the next chief. It'll probably last three chiefs.
Okay, perfect.
And so, yeah, it's not getting, it's not getting, it's outfitted for patrol use. It's the only thing that is not going to be outfitted for is transport, and for transporting prisoners. And also, again, it won't be equipped to, to house a long gun, less lethal, and some of the other equipment that, that our patrol officers carry.
Thank you. And then one last comment, if I can. Just like to echo Mayor Protem a little bit there. I would, I would be in support, again, your call, but I would be in support of this if you said, yeah, we'll take the new vehicle and put it into the patrol fleet and use one of the other vehicles for the SRO. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, before I call for a vote, do you want to respond, respond at all to Councilmember Foyer?
Yeah, just, and, and I just don't want there to be any misperceptions also, and I understand that, but just going back to the school resource officer, it, the, the cost of this doesn't, it doesn't include the cost of the wrap and all those things. Those are things we can negotiate with the school. This is just the purchase of the vehicle and to equip it. So I think, I think there was a misperception that we were also including the graphics and the wrap for the school, that, that cost is not included in this, in this, the price here in the agenda.
Thanks for clarifying that. So i- if, if that were to be pursued, and that would probably come, due to the cost, I would most likely come back to the council to review as well, correct?
Yes.
Great. All right. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, and if you'd raise your hands as well, just so I can make sure we got who has what. So all those in favor, say yea, and raise your hand.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, well, that would be easier than I thought. Seven out of seven, motion passes. All right.
It's been so long, you have to go back to the notes and see where we are, is on I. Motion to authorize a total of $92,748 to install the emergency generator system at the Public Safety Library Building, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with industrial, commercial service.
Second. Wait a second.
Second.
Move second by Councilmember Seaver. Any discussion? I saw a couple hands. Who did I see first? Councilmember Foyer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if somebody could help me understand the $12,000 difference. Break, maybe a breakdown, actually, cause of contingency.
Is that from the, the contract of what was proposed and what we're asking for?
Yeah, the summary statement says 80,650 is from the proposal from industrial, commercial, and your list is 92,748.
Yes, that was just for 15% contingency, since it's a facilities project. That's been kind of best practices to, to look at that. I don't anticipate we'll get anywhere near that, but I just wanted to make sure that we have that flexibility in there.
Ben, is that your number that you work with, is 15%?
Typically for facilities projects, and 10% for cap, or construction projects on, like, roadways, is, is usually what I look at.
Thank you.
Annie, go ahead. Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of the citizens and everybody listening in, I really want to point out to the citizens that originally, when we looked at putting a generator in there, we were somewhere in the vicinity of $180,000 to do this. It took us a period of time in discussing back and forth what we're going to do there. In the interim, because of the timeframe, we had a local company come forward and donate a generator valued at, Ben, what'd you say, $80,000?
Yeah, the engineer's estimate was 88,000, and they donated the entire amount, which was.
I mean, so for the citizens, and a reminder, the council's already aware of this, that we saved $88,000 by us, by even a stall. You know, I know, I was frustrated thinking, why was it taking so long to make decisions on this generator and the lighting? And the silver cloud there, lining was, we had a citizen come forward in business and say, I'm going to donate that generator to the ci- city. That was absolutely phenomenal. So we're really ahead of the game by spending $92,748. Thank you.
And, and just to, to call out specifically the, the local company who did that, it was Reven. I don't know if they donate under Reven Racing or Reven Management, because I know they, they've run a couple of buildings around here as well, but a big thanks to them for their, their contribution.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We got it, seven out of seven, motion passes.
Jay, motion to delegate authority to the mayor to execute general construction agreement number 37617 with a visor for relocating of electrical facilities for Kramer Road Bridge in the amount of $84,340.
Second.
Move second by Councilmember Seaver. Any discussion or question?
Question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Langford.
Katie, is this in budget?
Yes, and it's covered, it's part goes towards the credit for our $6 million contribution for the project. It was more efficient for us to handle it in the design phase as opposed to the construction phase.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All, seven out of seven, motion passes. All right.
Very good. And the very last one, Kay. Motion to delegate authority to the mayor to execute general construction agreement number 37649 with a visor for relocating of gas facilities for Kramer Road Bridge in the amount of $13,510.
Second.
Second, and if I recall earlier discussions, this is really in the same, really the same as Jay, but just for, for gas versus electric, the same situation. Any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, ayes have it, motion passes, seven, seven. All right, it was a marathon consent agenda. Thanks, everybody. So looking through here, we don't have any public meetings, resolutions, ordinances, emergency ordinances, introduction of upcoming agenda items. Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a reminder that we do have that special workshop on March 30th at 6:00 p.m. And then I'm looking at our agenda for April 6th, and let me check my notes here. So we have a, hopefully, a ballot measure for the council to review related to term limits. We'll be working on that, and as soon as we get it close to being complete, we will make sure we provide a copy to all the council members, so they can have time to look at it before the council meeting. We will also follow up on GSI funding. We will also follow up on Councilmember Langford's question about crash, crash protection ballers at the Roundabout. And there's some other items. I'm going to ask Lisa or Jen, if you guys could step in and talk about anything you might have. And then I, the one item that I forgot to mention is that we'll bring back a budget amendment for a new police officer, budget neutral, so it will only address the FTE elements, not any changes in dollars. So Jen, did you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Okay. Lisa, did you have anything else to add?
I do not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we are back at the time where we have room, time for more citizen comments. If there's anybody who would like to comment, I can't see everybody, so if you could shoot a chat to, put a chat in and note your name, and I will call on you for citizen comments. Okay, Ms. Garcia, you're up.
Thank you again, Mayor and council members. I recognize myself as one of those usual suspects, meaning a person who speaks up, a person who contributes, a person who talks about things that I feel as a resident needs to be talked about and solicit support from a government who is leading the charge. But right now, I just have to make one important comment. I feel that the limited participation of the community at large is in part due to our government not creating opportunities for engagement. We've had a couple of items on workshop discussions, and items that get most of the discussion go on a workshop, where the citizens do not get to participate. So one might wonder why they don't involve themselves on the Zoom or at public podiums when we are in person. It's because the government has not opened up the creative opportunities for them to be involved. Yes, it is sad that I am probably one of those usual suspects who, okay, she's talking again, and so we just turn that off. But I think what is important is that I'm speaking for a lot of people out here who really want to have a bigger voice, because it's our voice that the decisions you make are based on. I'm just asking. Take it upon yourself just to think about me as not a usual suspect, but as a community member, speaking on behalf of many of them, who someday you will be a part of, to allow us to have a real engagement and communication, and not just come to a Zoom, listen to a meeting, and then have two opportunities in three minutes to go home. That is the prayer I pray on every day when I come to these meetings, because I think it is important, and I think we have too many missed opportunities the way that it is processed today. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any others, Todd? All right, seeing no additional citizen comments, we will adjourn. Thanks, everybody, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.